Good evening. Welcome to the June 26th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. We have OHS softball champions in the house. So we'll be hearing from them. First, I'd like to go ahead and ask for roll call, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for our invocation. This evening, we have Father Charles from the Prince of Peace Abbey, who this year reaches 60 years of having taken his vows. 60 years. Congratulations, Father Charles.
Let us pray. Divine source of all that we have, we turn to you for strength, wisdom, and prudence in these troubled and changing times. We are grateful for your bounty that you have showered upon us. We acknowledge our limit in dealing with the vast and uncertain course before us, especially in attending to a finite amount of resources supplied by your providence. We know that the true test of a government is its concern for all, but especially those who are most vulnerable. Only through your wisdom can solutions be found with reason, and especially with the love that is so necessary for the cooperation of diverse and vocal factions. Oceanside is a blessed place, and we ask for your protection and continued supply of worthy stewards to keep it so. And finally, we hold up to you those who dedicate their lives to protecting it, the police, the paramedics, and the military, ever so present and ever so faithful. So with deepest gratitude, we ask all of these in your divine name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me with Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. This is really, really exciting. We do have one proclamation this evening. And it is a proclamation in honor of Oceanside High School softball pirates. Avocado League, CIF San Diego Division III and CIF SoCal Division IV champions 2024. Yes. I'd like to go ahead and call forward our softball team. OHS, we are the best. Come on down. Also, Coach Romero. We've got a lot of family here, too. And you know what? This is so special, even made more special, because we're talking about generational families that have attended or have some relationship to Oceanside High School. So these are our champs. I do want to read the proclamation and then hand the mic over to Coach Romero. So it says, "Whereas, almost all of this year's Oceanside High School softball team members has a family member who either attended OHS or is otherwise connected to the school with OHS familiar family names in the roster, reinforcing a generational love of baseball and desire and spirit to win. And whereas, Michael Romero is a former OHS baseball player who was hired in 2019 as head coach after being a volunteer assistant. And whereas Assistant Coach Joe Nuones has been with the team since 2000, when his dad, Joe Nuones, was the head coach. And whereas, in April of 2024, the team lost a second time to Avocado League competition team Sage Creek, placing the Pirates in a position of having to win almost every single game thereafter to achieve their goal, coming to a defining moment for the team. And whereas, after winning 16 of the previous 17 games, the Pirates were down to one pitcher for the final weeks after losing ace pitcher and 12-game winner Isabella Gobea to injury. And whereas sophomore pitcher Nayeli Adame stepped up, pitching 81 consecutive innings." Right? 81? Yeah. Whereas, on June 1st, 2024, the Pirates went on the road and beat L.A. Garfield 15-4, scoring nine runs in the third inning to win the first regional SoCal championship in school history, taking the Avocado League and CIF San Diego Division III titles. And whereas, the Oceanside High School softball Pirate team made history in Oceanside with courage and a lot of heart, representing and reflecting the best of our Oceanside community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim today, June 26th, 2024, as Oceanside High School Softball Pirate Day, Pirates Day, in the city of Oceanside in honor of their historic phenomenal season. Coach, I'm going to hand you the mic.
All right. We're here because of these girls. They bought in years ago when we took over, and they continue to fight. We knew it was going to be a long three-year rebuild, and there's, you know, these six seniors, senior year was going to be something special, and, you know, they definitely show what a team, what a team can do. We weren't necessarily the best pitching staff out there, you know, the whole team as a general, but we were the best team as a team. And it takes a team to win at this level, especially to win 17 out of 18 games is pretty phenomenal stuff. I appreciate it. We appreciate all the support, and I'm going to go ahead and pass the mic down, and each player can introduce themselves.
Nalia Nuones, shortstop, number four.
Kayden Folatoy, third baseman, number eight.
Hannah Narcie, first baseman, number 23.
Seven Fui Maono, number seven, second base.
Nayeli Adame, pitcher, at number 11.
Lexi Fantohaj, catcher, number 14.
Isabella Gobea, pitcher, number 13.
Shay Madrid, number 27.
Drew Larson, number 42, outfield.
Taylor Armstrong, outfield, number 10.
Sarah Austin.
Leah Nance, number two, outfield.
Malia Pomela Flores, number six.
Michaela Pomela Flores, number 56, designated hitter.
Well, you guys are, I mean, this is, this is the first time in history. I was just at a reunion, and I'm trying to remember what is the oldest class that actually continues to go to the all-class reunion for Oceanside High School. But I do understand that this is the first time, and a lot of things that, you know, even though you win, you think, okay, I'm going to get something, right? I'm going to get a medal, or I'm going to get something, a patch, I'm going to get a ring. Well, guess what? They don't get those. They actually have to pay for them. So one of the things they're asking for is help in making sure that, first of all, that these young ladies get a banquet where they can get dressed up and celebrate their wins, right? And also to have this momentum of this fantastic season that they've just had. It's fantastic. There's, you know, what, you've got the sophomore, Adame, pitching, and I guess she's coming back next year, so who knows? Maybe we could do two straight wins in the history of Oceanside, right? But they're going to be, how many are seniors? Six. Okay. Well, I just know that you're going to continue with this fantastic streak of winning, right? So thank you very much. We do have a clip with... Isn't that fantastic? I do want to comment also that we have family in the house, too. You want to raise your hand or stand up for family that supported, went to all the games, got them through some really trying times. So raise your hand, your family, you're related to this team. Yeah! All right. Thank you. So we have a photo. Let me scoot. Can we get together? Thank you. Thank you. And if you'd like to help, just contact my office. We were trying to get a phone number, but we weren't able to do that. So contact my office. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Clean Energy Alliance, CEA. I asked the CEO, Greg Wade, to come and do a presentation. This is because there is a hearing tomorrow at 2:00, 3:00? Is it 2:00, 3:00?
2:00.
Basically, 2:00. That is basically during the day, and people are, will not be able to make it. So we're hoping that we'll be able to have this presentation. It is going to include a discussion about rate increases, and hopefully Greg will be able to give some suggestions on, if you're on a fixed income, what you have for options. Greg?
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes, it is on.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, member of the city council. First of all, let me say it just, it makes me very proud to represent communities like this, getting to see the outstanding achievement of Oceanside's softball team, so congratulations to them. Let's start with just an overview of what has been going on with Clean Energy Alliance. For those who don't know, this is a clean energy provider for the cities of Del Mar, Solana Beach, Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, Escondido, and San Marcos. We recently enrolled at Oceanside and Vista. That began with notices being sent out in February or March this year, known as pre-enrollment notices. April, we sent out another notice to let people know that this was happening. May and June were the post-enrollment notices, and those have, are going out, and the last will be delivered in the next couple of weeks here in June. As of June 12th, there have been just about 3.9% of the customers in Oceanside are opted out, have elected to opt out. 121 have opted down. There's three energy products to 50%. And 51 have opted up to be Green Impact Champions at 100% renewable energy. We've been in the community, doing various outreaches to the cities of Vista and Oceanside, and these are some of the things we've been engaged with, the Oceanside School District, Chamber of Commerce. We've been to the Main Street Farmer's Market, as well as the Country Club, Oceanside Country Club Senior. We've been to the Farmer's Market both on Thursday nights and the regular Farmer's Market and Oceanside Hills Country Club Expo. So what I'm going to present to you is our next fiscal year budget, and this is one of the reasons why we're here, considering, and tomorrow, the board, on which a member of this council sits, will be considering the budget as well as the proposed rates. This will be the first, this next fiscal year will be the first full year that we will be serving Oceanside's customers. They were enrolled, as I mentioned, in April of this year. The energy costs that you'll see in this budget are based on forecasts. We've already been procuring energy for Oceanside. That starts well in advance of the customers actually being enrolled. And so that results in a sizable expenditure budget for energy procurement. And then we have a staffing and administration budget, which is only 3% of our total budget, 3% of the operational costs, and the rest is all in energy costs. But we do not have any new positions in the budget as of yet, and we are programming $600,000 for the first time in CEA's history, having a program budget of $600,000 to help our communities and residents with the Energy Efficiency Program. These are a little difficult to read, but let me just tell you that the renewable energy market is very tight right now. There are a lot of community choice energy programs throughout the state. There are now 26. And roughly 90% of all the energy in San Diego County, in SDGNE territory, is being served by one of two community choice programs, either us, Clean Energy Alliance, or San Diego Community Power to the South. What these charts show you is the dramatic increase in the cost of renewable energy over just one year. On the left, the upper left-hand corner is what's known as resource adequacy. Think of every agency like ours having to buy excess energy for those really hot summer days when everyone's using energy. We have to have a 17% overage of the highest demand day for every load-serving entity, and that's what's known as resource adequacy, to make sure that on those really hot days that everybody can turn their lights on, and if they have it, turn their air conditioning on. So that price has gone up 200% in just a year, especially in the summer months. You can see that peak in the summer months. Renewable energy has gone up 275% since January of last year. And carbon-free energy, which is generally large hydroelectric energy, has gone up more than 390%, 400% in the last year. That puts a strain on our budget because we have to buy that energy for our customers. Here you can see our five-year outlook. The preliminary budget shows a change in net position that is unsustainable at $13.7 million. As I get into the rates, I'll remind everybody here and also then that we have not raised our rates since January of last year, so we've been going beyond a year without a rate increase. These show the numbers in the out years, and as you can see, we need to do something to keep up with the high cost of the renewable energy. So looking at the rate summary and analysis, as of right now, our winter rates, well, actually, we just started summer rates. Summer rates go through June through October. Winter rates are in place from November to May. So you can see here, there's an overview of the summer rates as compared not only to SDGNE, but within Clean Energy Alliance, we have four different, what are known as vintages. Those mark the time that these cities came into CEA. And you can see here in the bottom right corner that our winter rates, if we held them firm, would be, customers would realize a 2.6% benefit over the SDGNE's rates in the winter. The downside is that SDGNE at the beginning of this, well, upside for everybody, but the downside in terms of comparing our summer rates is that SDGNE just lowered their rates at the beginning of the year, increased them slightly in March of this year. But I'm going to show you the summer rates, and you'll see that number in the bottom right-hand corner changes to where currently there's a premium on the cost of energy for CEA at our 75% renewable rate. So looking at this average over a year, keeping in mind that out of the year, five months are at that higher summer rate, seven months are at the lower winter rate. That's an average over the course of the year of the entire energy bill for customers in Oceanside of about 0.9% more than SDGNE, or $1.65 over the course of the year. So when we set our rates, and our board does not take this lightly, nobody likes to have to consider increases, and whether it's a permit fee that I'm sure you guys look at, or sewer rates, energy rates are no different. We take this very seriously. But we do have certain requirements that we have to meet. As any new community choice program has to do, we have a line of credit with JP Morgan Chase Bank. And in order to meet the covenants for that line of credit, we have to keep our debt service coverage ratios, our reserve ratios, and all those intact, and that's a very key objective to set our rates. We have to set our rates to cover our costs, in short. We have to address our cash flow needs. We have to provide funds to meet our respective agencies' climate action plan goals, primarily to increase renewable energy and achieve 100% renewable by 2035. And we have to maintain rate stability, which, as I mentioned, is something that we've done over the course of our existence. In fact, having, as of, the proposal for right now is to change rates in November, that will be going on close to a year and three-quarters without having changed our rates. And then, of course, our reserve policy, as I mentioned. And then all of this is setting us up to, in the future, be able to get a credit rating so that we can buy and sell energy in the market. So we looked at three, the board looked at three rate proposals. Options one, two, and three, the first of which would have seen a 10% increase, and keep in mind, this is just on the energy generation. Everybody's SDGNE bill has two general components. The delivery, which is, think of the poles and the wires, and SDGNE still operates those and sends the energy to your home. And then the generation cost, the actual commodity, the energy. Clean Energy Alliance only deals with that. That averages to be about 25% of your total bill on the electricity side. So on that 25%, we were looking at potentially raising it 10% effective July 1st this year, and then again next year on July 1st. The second option was a 20% increase in November of this year. And the third option was to, because summer rates already go higher as of June 1st than the winter rates, and that's just because of the energy demand, in order to smooth out the transition or smooth out that impact to ratepayers, we looked at bifurcating the rates and having a higher increase in the winter when our rates drop by an average of about $35 to $45 per customer. And then having a smaller rate increase in the summer, in this case, 15%. All of these options would meet our covenants with JP Morgan for securing debt service and also to meet our costs. The board at its meeting last May opted to proceed with the option three. However, what they also did was to direct the board to, or the staff, rather, to look at other options that would help smooth and decrease the impact, smooth the rates from winter to summer, and decrease the impact to customers. These are the priorities that we looked at when making this decision. The board was very concerned about an immediate rate increase. They did not want to do that to the new customers. And they figured that the November increase, where, as I mentioned, the rates already drop about $30 to $45 per customer, that would have a lessening of the impact of that rate increase. And then also charging lower summer rate increase to, again, decrease the impact to customers. So looking at those three options, you can see here, and I won't go over all of this, but you have the current rates roughly per month for the total bill on the top. Option three, which is what the board selected, shows the increase for the winter bill at $177.50, summer bill up to $213. And then the total average monthly bill would be $192, which is an increase of 5.4% for customers in Oceanside and Vista. This just shows us what those three options look like in a bar graph, and as you can see in the orange, which is the option that the board asked us to move forward with, you see that while the increase in the winter is a little bit greater, the increase in the summer is lower, and so you can see that it's a less of a jump for customers to have to handle. And again, we are looking at another proposal that will smooth out it out even more. And let me go forward real quickly. That doesn't really mean too much to our customers. Will achieve all the goals that Oceanside set out to achieve. The option four that will be considered tomorrow will actually result in an increase of less than 5.4%. It'll result in an increase of 5.2% average residential ratepayer over the course of the year. Keeping in mind that when Oceanside decided to join CEA, their front and center of their decision were a number of things, to achieve the Climate Action Plan goals, to look at higher content renewable energy, to have local control so that these decisions were made actually in this council chamber on a monthly basis. We meet here the last Thursday of each month. And to be able to take the revenue as a nonprofit entity, we take the revenue that we generate, and we feed it back into programs for these communities. So again, we're looking at putting $600,000 into our program budget to help customers with programs in the city of Oceanside. The programs that we have launched, I know I'm running out of time. I apologize. I'll get through this quickly. You asked about benefits. We do have a program for residential, single-family residential homes to get solar and battery storage at no upfront cost. That's a program we're offering. We also offer the Care and Farrah programs, which offer 30% discounts for eligible income-qualified customers. And we also allow people to opt down to the 50% renewable, which also saves you money. There are some other benefits that customers that are on fixed incomes can look into. One is the medical baseline allowance. That is a SDGNE program that is offered through CEA as well. Also, the low-income home energy assistance program is still available to all our customers. The Neighbor-to-Neighbor program, which gives customers the ability to defray $300 of costs on their bill. A rear management plan, that's available to Care and Farrah customers as well. That allows you to enter into a payment plan to make it easier to pay your bills, so you won't have any service interruptions. And then any customer can contact SDGNE or us to look at ways to set up payment arrangements for people having difficulty paying their energy bill. Again, as you mentioned, Mayor, the board meets here tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. We will consider the budget that we are looking for for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2425. The board, as I mentioned, has supported that third option. However, there is that fourth option that will have less of an impact to ratepayers, and that is expected to, again, take place tomorrow. If people have customer questions or need assistance, these are the numbers on the board and our website address. And you can also contact SDGNE at the number in the website shown there, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? All right. Yes.
Just a quick question, Mr. Weiss. So when we saw the renewable energy prices skyrocket, just a brief explanation why that is. Is it just a lot more CCAs coming online and they're opting for more renewable, correct?
Yes. The easy answer is it's basic supply and demand question, so there's a lot of CCAs vying for that energy. One thing I will say that's a challenge right now for us is that there's a backlog of renewable energy projects up at California Independent Systems Operator. They're the entity that approves these projects. We've got hundreds of projects waiting to get permitted. And once those break loose, which we're expecting in the next two years, that should drop, that will increase the supply of renewable and drop the cost of that energy. That's our expectation.
One of the arguments about joining CCAs was that you're going to be able to do more renewable, and you'll save money from SDGNE. But again, as was expected, when everyone joins a CCA and everyone wants to 100% renewable, which isn't possible anyways, I mean, can you imagine if everyone in California jumps on a CCA and does 100% renewable? Is that possible? And I mean, what can you imagine happening to prices then?
Yeah, that's a difficult question to answer. I will say that the main objective for our CCAs was to get as many people into these programs to put a demand on renewable. It has programs to put a demand on renewable, it has done that. Right now, I don't think that all customers throughout the state, and keep in mind that CCAs are, there's 26 CCAs, roughly half the population of the state, so there's still a whole nother half that's still being served by IOUs, so we couldn't serve the entire population of the state with renewable right now, but what I will say is that on any given day in the spring, that the state of California is operating on more than 100% renewable because of all the solar that's in the state.
But any day, not any night?
That's correct. It's a solar-driven renewable energy during the day, and what we're trying to do right now is to find solutions for energy storage and also for non-weather-dependent energy like geothermal, wind, and the like.
I guess my point is those are very aspirational, we have that goal to achieve 100% renewable by 2035. I am skeptical, state and all these other very aspirational CCAs want the same thing, you're going to see the same skyrocketing renewable prices, it's just, it's going to be a challenge, I want people to be realistic about what we can actually do with this, I think these are tough numbers to hit, so that's it, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Oh, yes, Peter, Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you very much for the presentation, I just, Mayor, as the city's representative to the CEA, I just was curious, are you going to be supporting the rate increases as proposed by the?
Actually, Councilmember Joyce is going to be sitting in tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
Do you want me to take that?
Yep.
I'm going to do my best to take under consideration all of the information that's presented, so from what I know right now, you know, we have to do what's in the solvent interest of the organization. We are definitely fortunate that we are part of a group that we actually have that control of, which, you know, this local control is, which I know our council supports that.
Thank you, no further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Close session report?
Thank you, City Council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss Item 1 on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations involving several groups, including the Oceanside Police Officers Association, the Non-Sworn Police Officers Association, the Western Council of Engineers, the Oceanside City Employees Association, and the Oceanside Marine Safety Association, and there's no action under the Brown Act that we are required to report at this time.
Thank you. Next, our consent item calendar, consent items, we have consent items 3 through 31, I understand we are pulling, public is pulling item number 23, also pulling 25, any other requests to pull?
Yes, we've had requests to pull Items 5, 11, 18, 23, and 25, and Item 27.
There's a motion to approve the balance, and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, it's going to be two-minute time for speaking, so Item Number 5, approval of a purchase order to fly motion in amount not to exceed $367,045 for the purchase of a mobile common command vehicle utilizing source well contract, appropriation of $160,000 from assigned North River Farms evacuation fund, and authorization for the financial services director or designee to execute the purchase order. Who's asked to pull?
Our speaker that's registered is Dennis Martnik.
Dennis?
Mayor, excuse me, members of council, Dennis Martnik, 45-year resident of Morales area, Oceanside. Reading the staff report leads to the conclusion that funds are being misused to purchase this vehicle. In reading it over, the funds are supposed to be for evacuation improvements. When North River Farms settled with Preserve Calavera and let Oceanside vote, the conclusion was that $200,000 would be donated to the city for use to improve evacuation procedures, and there's no indication in the staff report that that's what it would be used for. So the concern is, it needs clarification or at least some kind of review to show how that's going to happen. How will spending money on this vehicle improve evacuation procedures in our area that are subject to the Lilac Fire and other fires in the past? The staff report background says that the police department faces difficulties with the previous vehicle, which is a larger vehicle that was purchased by the fire department. It says it's not suitable for smaller events like serving high-risk warrants, SWAT callouts, and community events. There's no mention of fire evacuation improvements, so that should be done, that has to be made in the staff report or some document. When our group, a group of homeowners in the Morales area, met with Councilmember Robinson and Battalion Chief Dorsey, it was explained what was going to take place, but in, we strongly approve of it. We approve the vehicle that's being proposed here, but we feel that that should be purchased out of a general fund and have some reserve for these improvements to the roads and evacuation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there a staff person, John, were you planning on speaking on this, Mr. Mullin?
No, I wasn't, but I can answer questions. The money was given by the developer through their lawyer to the city, the city was not a party to any agreement, and the money, the developer expressed what his desire, what their desire would be in terms of the use of the money, but it was subject to the discretion of the city council. I have that letter, I could read it to you if you'd like.
All right, so the intent was to address evacuation issues that are very, very critical to this part of the community, are there other funds that we could use on a later time to address those issues from this community?
I'd have to have the city manager address that.
Mr. Borrego?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, we're not prepared to answer that question tonight, so we'd have to do some additional research and come back to you if that's the desire of the council.
Is this a time of the essence?
I don't believe so.
No, sir. I, Honorable Mayor, I do have some clarification.
Sure.
To alleviate some of those questions, specifically when we were dealing with the Lilac Fire, our larger mobile command vehicle, we couldn't use in the areas that we needed to, we have forward units in tactical staging areas that need communications, command and control during those events, this vehicle would specifically be used for that. The primary purpose of this vehicle is to improve communication and coordination among law enforcement personnel, which would include all those other events, which include any type of evacuations, any of the tactical kind of events that we incur during the time of a crisis, and again, specifically the North River Farms agreement was part of only, are using this for emergency evacuation purposes, along with any other emergency-type things that take place in the city.
Okay, so this is, so what portion of the time would you think that it would be used for that purpose in this part of the city?
For evacuations specifically?
Yeah.
I mean, whenever, I mean, we're in fire season now, whenever we have these types of fires, you typically, for police, we're working 12-on, 12-off, and it's up to a week, two weeks, but for smaller events or smaller things that take place, even residential fires in this neighborhood would require the use of this vehicle in order for us to coordinate with fire and police to get evacuations going outside of these neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Yeah, Mayor, David Parsons, Fire Chief. When we received these funds, some of the identified uses were potentially through message boards, signage, things like that. We reached out to multiple departments in the city to look at what the needs were. We have signboards, we have things that can be used. Signboards are also difficult to put out in immediate, in an immediate need situation. We've talked with, there was mention about major roadways, we don't control Caltrans, for example, they're the ones who control Highway 76 in that location. So, we reviewed and looked at some other options, everything that we could think of, talked to other departments, other staff members, this is one of the first uses we came up with, and what we support the police department on this purchase is because it's a multi-use vehicle and can be used for any disaster. If we start to limit what we use some of these funds for in being single-purpose, I mean, how many times have we evacuated? Once in that area. Now, that does mean that there's a possibility in the future, and we want to make sure we can handle that, but these sorts of resources are now available to be used in multiple locations if necessary and be of the most benefit to both the region and the city.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Weiss, and then Councilmember Robinson.
Well, since we weren't a party to the settlement agreement, and we have a letter indicating that we have the discretion to use the money, I move approval, staff recommendation.
There's a motion and a second, Councilmember Robinson, did you want to speak? Did you want to speak? All right, there is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item Number 11, which is approval of Amendment 1 to the professional services agreement with Heritage Architecture and Planning in the amount of $13,500 for a total contract amount not to exceed $466,570 for architectural and engineering design and environmental service, services for the Crown Heights Community Resource Center building, and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment, and who is the person who pulled it?
Ryan Jones.
Mr. Jones?
City Council, my name's Ryan Jones, I have been going to Miracosta College for about two years now, and in my time going there, as part of my Mexican-American History Honors course, we learned a lot about the Crown Heights Community Resource Center and its history as the Oceanside Americanization School, a segregated school for Mexican children. Now, this Americanization School is currently being researched by my college, and we are doing our best to learn about the history of it and the history of segregation in Oceanside, however, I would just like it to be put forward that we would like not much more of this to be changed, modified, or the design of the building, or the building itself to be changed much more, until we are able to fully research the history of this building and fully understand the impacts that it has had on our community throughout the years that it was teaching people in a way that is subpar to the way that white students were being taught, and for this reason, I would just like that, to make sure these resources are used most properly and that the face of the building, or the structure, or its history are not erased. Thank you.
Thank you. I move approval, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion, second, please vote. Oh, Councilmember Joyce.
Do we have an update on when that's going to start, when the programs that are in the center are going to be displaced?
I believe we have Victor here to provide us with an update.
And does this include enough funds for those programs to have another site that's nearby, I guess?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, to address your question, Councilmember Joyce, right now we're in this, preparing the plans, we're going to have a full construction set of plans scheduled for July. With that, we're going to start going into the bidding process for the project. As far as the location of the temporary sites for both the Vista Community Clinic, because they hold some services there, and also the Resource Center, we have looked at locations and we have been in close communication with the community there, one of their requests was that we keep the temporary locations within the community, and that we've really made an effort into looking at that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, this is, it does have a historic designation, so there are a lot of regulations for historic buildings, I actually was the one who really pushed for renovations for this, because you plug something in, the whole building would go out. So electricity was incredibly important, as well as air circulation, to ensure that at some point, the kids that usually use this place, to use some of the computers that are in there, are able to do so safely. There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item Number 23 is approval of a public works agreement with Dave Bang and Associates in an amount of $584,459, with a contingency of $25,000 for the purchase and installation of replacement playground equipment at Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and authorization for the city manager or designee to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Ms. Diane Wolke?
Oh, we had somebody pull Item 18, I didn't know if you wanted to take 23 first?
Well, I just called 23, so let's, I'll call 18 afterwards.
All right, we'll do 23. Our first speaker is Diane Wolke, to be followed by Joe Hill, to be followed by Christine
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Diane Wolke, District 2. I'm speaking on behalf of Safe Healthy Playing Fields, of which I'm a board member, it's a national nonprofit. Synthetic turf, rubberized, and used tire crumb surfacing, plastic shade structures, and playground equipment are not sustainable products, they're linear products made from fossil-fuel-based petroleum and other toxic and cancer-causing chemicals. They're not recyclable, and synthetic turf ends up being stored in warehouses, dumped on agricultural land in California and across country, playground surfacing and equipment is currently landfillled. In rare instances, these products are mechanically recycled, are sent to Baytown, Texas, to ExxonMobil for highly toxic and banned process in California. Newly released research from Berkeley National Labs shows that plastics off gas four times the greenhouse gases that the aviation industry does. They create massive heat islands, synthetic turf field heat islands are so big that they're actually visible from satellites in space. Research has shown that microplastic blades from synthetic turf contribute 15% of the macro and mesroplastics in the ocean, and UC Davis at Lake Tahoe has reported massive amounts of synthetic turf blades in the lake. There's also been research out of Spain, Japan, and other countries on this same issue. California Coastal Commission conditioned UCSB's baseball field for natural grass only, stating that synthetic turf blades, or synthetic turf is not sustainable, it's not superior, and they cited microplastics as the reason. The Center for Environmental Health has filed a notice of intent to sue both Home Depot and Lowe's and others for failure to notify customers about PFOS, one of the PFAS chemicals in synthetic turf, and the California Office of the Attorney General also filed a notice of intent to sue on the 10th of May. In addition to the extreme heat capable of causing thermal burns.
Thank you, ma'am.
Plastics off gas chemicals.
Thank you. Joe Hill?
I have in front of you samples of what, Mayor, of what kids are playing on currently, and this is what else is going into our waterways and our ocean.
You're talking about the mat that's on the bottom. You're talking about the request to, because it's not artificial turf, it's, you're saying it's the plastic.
But if they choose, if they decide to get rid of the used tire crumb surfacing, we don't want to go to synthetic turf under, on the playground surface either.
Could, can I ask a question? Mr. Borrego, is this a time-sensitive matter? Because I would have liked to have had staff conference with these folks, this is a consent item, and usually that's not non-controversial items.
I believe it actually is time-sensitive according to public work staff and park staff.
I have a question too, Mayor. I just don't, is, could you, is there the, are we replacing turf? I don't see it in the staff report, I see play equipment and shade sales.
Synthetic turf is not proposed for the project.
Right, I understand, and she understands that, it's, we're not talking about synthetic turf, we're talking about other pieces, it's plastics. All right, Mr. Hill, go ahead.
Joe Hill, Oceanside resident. I do think that this should be kicked down the road a little bit, one of the things that I'd like to say is, I know that Diane has brought this up for many, many years as far as the surfaces of our playgrounds, but I had a personal experience, on June 9th, 2021, the grandkids from South Carolina came to Oceanside, and we went down to the beach, the Harbor Beach, the best beach in Oceanside. There is a playground- There is a playground there, and most of my day was spent chasing a three-year-old around the beach, trying to rattle him and seeing what he was doing, but he did see the playground and wanted to go get in the swings. So we headed up there. I went there first to check the swings out. He was behind me, but not that far behind. And as soon as I hit that rubber, my feet, I couldn't believe. I was upset, I was teed off, you know, why, why would we have that type of surface on playground equipment? Now, I understand, we could probably get Martin Luther King's, the playground equipment there right away, but I don't think we need to put the surface in. We need to try something different in the city. You could test it there, make it different. Otherwise, we need to put up a sign that says, you know, beware of the surface on a hot day. It was 80 degrees that day, sun all day at Oceanside. So my recommendation would be that we do postpone it till maybe after July, when you guys are back. And I challenge you, Ryan, Eric Esser, Rick, and Peter, go to one of these playgrounds when it's hot, take your shoes off and stand there. It'll kill you, you can't. You got to jump off as soon as you can. It's just too hot for kids. And the city, if it hasn't been already, the city may have some litigation, you know, regarding this because it's a problem. Thank you.
Christine Gorman? Is Christine Gorman here?
Christine Gorman?
Okay, she's not here. All right, I actually, I, time is of the essence on this. Staff?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Nathan Mertz, Public Works Division Manager. Yeah, this playground facility is about 24 years old, and it's exceeded its life expectancy. Just to let everybody know, the port-in-place rubber surfacing that we're using has a virgin cap on it, so the cap that we're, you'd come in contact with is virgin rubber. In addition, we did a community survey as part of this project, which is not usually done with a maintenance project, with a replacement project. So we took the time to do a two-month-long survey in which almost 1,000 residents responded to that survey. One of the biggest components is accessibility and inclusivity on this playground. Having a rubberized service provides ADA access. It allows children of all abilities to gain access to the site, and that's one of the biggest things that we heard from the community, besides shade, which we will have a shade structure covering part of this particular facility, and then just new improved structures. So that is what we're providing to them.
Right, so there is no deadline by which you have to do this. It's just that it's been there for 24 years.
The surface that's out there now has gotten to a point where we need to replace it.
Right, okay. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Nathan, is this the same material that was used at Chavez Park over here?
That is correct. Councilmember Robinson, this is in line with every single playground structure we have or playground area that we have. The port-in-place rubber is everywhere to provide that ADA access, and it's consistent with the rest of the parks.
I think all of us that visited that park when it opened up was pretty impressed with the layout and the materials there. Have we had any complaints from any of our new parks like Chavez or of any injuries or complaints by the people that use it?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss?
Mr. Mertz, how many different types of surfaces would be allowable under park design standards?
You have about four surfaces. Pea gravel, sand, engineered wood chip, or rubberized surface.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I would like to make a motion that we continue this so that we can at least have some discussion with those who are asking these kind of questions. Really, consent items should not be for controversial items. We should at least have those issues discussed, and then at least maybe find some middle ground here. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and second to continue this item. Certainly not for another year, but certainly, you know, just, just as time enough to have this discussion. That would be like maybe a month? I'm going to say 30 days. Well, we're not back till August anyway, so, Councilmember Robinson? I was going to say there's a.
Okay, but having the discussion, what would that change? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to understand. We know what they're saying they don't want. The one speaker brought up something we're not going to have. The other speaker is a concern about a product I don't think that's at the beach playground anymore. I'm assuming that's, I don't know. But to meet that requirement of inclusivity for everybody, that I think, you know, that all children can use this park surface.
That is a discussion that I think we shouldn't have on the dais for a consent item. That's, that's my point. Because if I had all the information, or if I even knew that this was going to happen, I would have had those conversations before today. So I do have, there is a motion and a second, please vote. Deputy Ray Keim?
What does 30-day delay do for us, besides just not having that for 30 more days?
At this time, it's about a three-month lead time just to get the equipment. So we're not looking until October now, basically, to get the equipment to start construction. So delaying it by a month, two months potentially, we're not to the end of the year, to this thing, to the playgrounds open.
But it's just another month, it's going to be the same wait time, or the same lead time if we order it now or in a month, right? Still have a three-month lead time?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's just a month.
Please vote.
Motion approved, three two. Robinson, Weiss, Snow.
Thank you very much. Item number 18. Approval of Amendment 3 to the Public Works Agreement with Singh Group in the amount of $907,364 for a new agreement total not to exceed $2.3 million for encampment-related trash removal services and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. Who pulled this?
Ryan Jones.
Mr. Jones?
City Council, I would just like to remind everyone here that some of the things that are included in trash as part of these encampments are some of these people's most important belongings, their documentation, potentially cash, medications. I would just like to remind all those here today that just because we do not like the aesthetic of some of these items does not detract from their importance in these people's lives, and these people do reserve respect and dignity in the handling of their items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I move approval, is there a second? There's a motion, second, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you, I'm calling number 25. This is, actually, I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to our city clerk.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Zeb Navarro, City Clerk. I was asked to put together a very brief presentation on Consent Calendar, item number 25, which are approval of various resolutions for the general municipal election. Staff recommends adoption of three resolutions relating to the Oceanside General Municipal Election. These three resolutions are calling and giving notice for the election of various city offices and any ballot measures, request to consolidate the general municipal election with the statewide general election, and adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to material submitted to the voters. On August 1st of 2017, the City Council adopted an ordinance establishing bi-district elections with an approved calendar for newly created council districts. On November 5th, 2024, the general municipal election shall be for the election of mayor, District 3 councilmember, District 4 councilmember, clerk, and treasurer for four-year terms ending in 2028. In accordance with California Elections Code, the City Council must adopt a resolution calling the election for those various city offices. In addition, the Council is required to adopt a resolution requesting that the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to consolidate the election, statewide election, and adopt a resolution adopting certain regulations and costs for candidates specifically for the candidate statement and other materials. The fiscal year 2425 budget, of which this will be paid out of, currently has $256,150 in the elections and public reporting account. The San Diego County Register of Voters will issue a final invoice to the city in late 2024. If more funds are needed, we will request those funds when it comes time to certify the election results by the City Council. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the three resolutions calling for the election, consolidating the election, and adopting regulations for candidates pertaining to material submitted to the cost of the general election. I'm available for any questions you may have, and we do have one speaker on this item, Jimmy Knott.
Thank you very much. And will the city clerk's office be the one answering questions about the elections in City of Oceanside?
That is correct. We will be in charge of all the election questions. They could just come to my office or call us up.
Thank you. Mr. Knott, two minutes.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. The issue I have is not with the election itself or the district offices, but with one basic area of the presentation, and that is for quote, "and for any ballot measure, measures that may be authorized by the City Council." We've had repeated items onto the agenda for primary considerations. Now, we also have had a request, a standing request from represent us to come before for a workshop before the City Council to save the taxpayers' funds as an alternate to a primary contest, and that's called rank choice voting. That has been delayed for consideration repetitively. I believe that this needs a public workshop, and I would take and recommend that any ballot measures be removed from consideration of this item. The other items for District 3, District 4, mayor, city clerk, treasurer, continue on, but for any potential ballot measures or any associated issues be eliminated from consideration until appropriate workshops where the public can have input is considered. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I move approval. Councilmember Weiss? Okay, please vote.
Proof five, motion approved, five zero.
How many speakers on item number 27?
We have two speakers on item number 27.
Okay, it is 6 o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and go to the time-certain matters. All right, I'm calling 34. This is adoption of a resolution approving a development plan, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, density bonus, and regular coastal permit to allow the construction of a mixed-use development project comprised of 360 residential apartment units, including 36 units reserved for low-income households, and a 62-room hotel with a 5,030-square-foot lobby and ancillary use area on a 1.72-acre site located at 815 and 901 North Coast Highway. The proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Article 19, Section 15332, Class 32, entitled "Infill Development Projects of the California Environmental Quality Act." This project is called Modera Neptune Mixed Use, the applicant's MCRT Investments LLC. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and ask our councilmembers to state their constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and public only.
Public.
Public?
Staff, public, and applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We afforded all correspondence prior to the meeting to the council.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and begin testimony with Manuel Baeza, Principal Planner.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, and members of the City Council. My name is Manuel Baeza, Principal Planner for the City of Oceanside. Tonight, you're being asked to consider the Modera Neptune Mixed Use Project consisting of a development plan, parcel map, conditional use permit, regular coastal permit, and density Staff is recommending that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving a development plan, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, density bonus, and regular coastal permit to allow for the construction of a mixed-use development project comprised of 360 residential units, including 36 units reserved for low-income households, and a 62-room hotel with 5,030 square foot, square feet of lobby area and ancillary use area on a 1.72-acre site located at 815 and 901 North Coast Highway. We have an aerial of the site. It's located at 815 and 901 North Coast Highway. It's located along North Coast Highway, Neptune Way, and Tremont Street, and it's located at a major gateway to the downtown. The general plan land use designation is downtown. The zoning for the project is downtown District 7B. The project's located in the townsite neighborhood planning area, and it's currently developed with a motel and former restaurant. Here we have images of the, of the project site. At the top, you have the project from North Coast Highway. At the bottom left-hand corner, you have the facade as it appears from Tremont Street, and on, at the right-hand corner, bottom right-hand corner, you have the project that is appeared, as it appears from north Neptune Way. This is a five-part application consisting of a development plan to demolish existing structures and develop a seven-to-eight-story mixed-use project with the 360-unit apartment building and adjacent 62-room hotel with three levels of subterranean parking with 493 parking stalls. The conditional use permit proposed is to establish a 62-room hotel and ancillary lounge use. The tentative parcel map would be to establish a condominium map and separate ownership of the residential use and hotel site. The density bonus application would be for the development of 360-unit apartment complex at a density of 210 dwelling units per acre in exchange for reserving 10% of the units, 36 apartments for low-income households. The regular coastal permit, and also a regular coastal permit to develop the mixed-use project within the boundaries of the local coastal plan in the non-appealable area. Here is the, here is the project site for the, here's the project site and the site plan. The site is 1.72 acres in area. Both buildings would front along Coast Highway. The entrance to the parking garage and residential lobby are on Neptune Way. Amenities would include an indoor courtyard, private gym, two-story clubhouse, and rooftop pool and deck. Most units would have private patios or balconies. Here are renderings of the project as the project would appear from North Coast Highway. The buildings feature modern coastal contemporary architecture with diversity in exterior materials and a color scheme. The building facades provide visual interest through the contrast of colors and materials, the pattern of balcony and wall projections, and the staggered building footprint. The density bonus proposes a 360-unit apartment complex with a density of 210 dwelling units per acre. Currently, there is no density cap in the downtown, in the coastal area. The applicant filed an SB 330 application to lock in development standards and fees back in, on May 8th, 2023. This project reserves 10% of the units for qualifying low-income households. Affordable units are proportionally. Affordable units are proportional to overall -- the overall project and unit mix and square footage and are reasonably dispersed throughout the development. The affordable unit mix would be 26 one-bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom units. Requested incentives and concessions and waivers must be approved unless findings are made that granting would result in a specific adverse impact defined as a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or condition. The applicant is requesting both incentives and concessions and waivers for the project in accordance with density bonus law. The incentive concession requested by the applicant is relief from the furniture improvements at Coast Highway, Neptune Way, and Tremont Street. The applicant is also requesting 19 waivers as listed and described in the staff report. The more significant waivers include minimum setback -- relief from minimum setback requirements, a minimum building height limitations, a relief from minimum landscaping standards, relief from minimum private open space requirements, and relief from minimum parking dimension The project is consistent with the general plan as follows. It's consistent with the patterns of development found along North Coast Highway and the downtown and would not conflict with adjacent uses. It offers a first impression of Oceanside at a major gateway to the downtown and would significantly improve the visual image of the surrounding neighborhood. The project replaces a blighted development with new apartments and a hotel featuring distinctive architecture and quality materials. The project produces opportunities for affordable housing with 36 new apartments for low-income households, and the project also results in a high-density mixed-use development along Highway 76 and North Coast Highway transit corridors and is located in a sandex mark growth opportunity area. The project is also consistent with the zoning ordinance and complies with the development standards except for those as requested for modification under the state density bonus law. The project is also consistent with the local coastal program. Redevelopment of the site with the new hotel would promote revitalization of the coastal area and would upgrade the city's visitor-serving accommodations. The project would not reduce the city's inventory of low-cost visitor-serving accommodations established in the local coastal program. The project is designed -- as designed, would help maintain the same number of low-cost motel rooms that the site currently provides. This project was presented to the Downtown Advisory Committee on March 27, 2024. The committee voted seven to one with one no vote, recommending that the CDC approve the project. DAC expressed concerns with the location of proposed 40-foot-long passenger loading and unloading zone to be installed along North Coast Highway and how it would be accessed. There's no right-of-way improvements were proposed to accommodate U-turns. A minor correction is needed to be made to the resolution on page 10. Lines eight and 11 have been updated and now read. "The hotel has been designed consistent with lower-cost economy lodging and will not include amenities found in mid-scale or upscale establishments, e.g., swimming pool, room service, valet, etc. Thus, it is unlikely that the project will be able to charge higher room..." Right before today's meeting, staff received a letter from SAFER challenging the use of the Class 32 exemption under CEQA for the project. The applicant has prepared a response, and that response has been given to the city clerk and can be included as part of the administrative record for the project. With that, staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving a development plan, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, density bonus, and regular coastal permit to allow the construction of a mixed-use development project comprised of 360 residential units, including 36 units reserved for low-income households, and a 62-room hotel with 5,030 square feet of lobby and ancillary use space at a 1.72-acre site located at 815 and 901 North Coast Highway. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. And what you described towards the end of your presentation with respect to the kind of services that you would have at the hotel, that would be to -- that would basically address low-cost visitor-serving?
They don't provide -- yeah, they don't provide any services, and therefore, they wouldn't be able to charge higher rates.
Right. All right, thank you. So the applicant has up to 20 minutes. Do we have the applicant? And I see there's a lot of folks that are standing in the back, and our fire chief has approached the podium.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, David Parsons, Fire Chief. Yes, I get to put my fire marshal hat on right now, and we have exceeded the occupant load of the room. So, two solutions. One is that there are a lot of open seats in the area, so please, if you're standing, take advantage of the open seats. Number two, we can allow anybody to be standing along the walls in one layer, and that is allowable for the occupant load. However, anybody that's not standing along the wall, we have set up chairs out in the foyer that people can sit down. You can hear the meeting occurring there, and when it's your time to speak, you can make your way to the podiums. So please, if you're not in a single layer along the wall, find a seat either in the chambers or outside in the foyer.
Well, it's thinning out pretty much in the back, so thank you for your advice, And so, thank you for that non-paid commercial for us here. Back to the -- well, he gets -- back to the applicant's presentation. Are you ready, sir?
Minor issue with that. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council and Community Development Commission. My name's Dan Niebaum, Lightfoot Planning Group, offices in Carlsbad. Here representing the applicant tonight, Mill Creek Residential Trust, MCRT, for what we believe is an incredible project in front of you. I thank staff for their presentation. Mill Creek has been working with the city and staff for almost three years on this site. John Coletti and Brian Norden, Norden Mazer here from Mill Creek. We have the applicant's -- we have the architect from AC Martin here. We also have our traffic consultant here, members from Helix Environmental here tonight, so we should be able to field any questions you may have. Again, you know, from the beginning, almost 18 months ago, we submitted the application. We've been speaking, meeting with the neighbors in the neighborhood. I think several of them are here tonight to speak on behalf of the project. And it was important for Mill Creek, they wanted to listen to the neighbors. We had a meeting on-site early on, and were able to learn some, you know, immediate concerns, and we tried to work on those throughout the development of the project. And apologize for the view on this, but it's not quite showing everything we wanted. But a little bit more about the applicant. You know, we were in front of you last year with another project from Mill Creek, and that was the Madera Melrose project that you approved last year, same developer, beautiful project that Melrose and Oceanside Boulevard. But they're a national company. They're -- thanks, Sergio. They're, you know, in 2023, they won National Award as an elite top-five company. They're a vertically integrated company, which means they design, develop, build, and manage these projects. So, you know, successful projects are important to them and important to the residents that they have in their projects. I want to give a little bit of background on a couple of their projects. This is a recent one that was completed in San Diego and opened in 2021, just following the pandemic. It's just 368 homes, but it speaks to the quality of the amenities and type of projects that they do. It's a highly amenitized project downtown. Some more of the amenity pictures. This is Melrose Madera, or Madera Melrose that I just spoke about. Very striking project. Will be on the southeast corner of the intersection there. Again, you looked at this last year and approved it. This is a mixed-use community with 33 affordable units in the project, and I think they expect -- they've been working diligently on getting plans approved for it to move ahead with constructing the project and getting it implemented as soon as possible. Another highly amenitized project, indoor and outdoor fitness centers, barbecue, outdoor pool, significant landscape and green spaces. This project's also adjacent to the Sprinter area. And then to our site for Madera Neptune. You know, Manny presented some of these pictures before, but again, you know, we understand, I think anybody who knows the site knows it's been somewhat of a problematic site over the years. The existing buildings are fairly deteriorated, certainly not what is proposed going forward. These are some of the existing pictures, looking on Tremont, looking at the view from Coast Highway. The top photo even shows a police cruiser. That's, I think, from Google Street View, and just timely happened to catch that in the photo. But it's a 1.72-acre site and contains the existing 62-room hotel, as Manny had gone through. A slide that Manny didn't have, I've presented this before, you know, again, we are in the transit-oriented district TOD, the downtown TOD, which really calls for the types -- these types of projects to be located, you know, in downtown areas, to provide density in these areas closer to the downtown amenities, along key transit corridors. This project site also speaks to the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan and the Coast Highway Plan, again, that calls for higher densification along corridors near where transit's available and near where other services are available. And, you know, I think it's very obvious this site meets those criteria with its location, where it's positioned, and what's proposed for development. And also, you know, there's a overlapping regulatory frame -- regulatory framework that, you know, goes across the site, as we were just mentioning. City of Oceanside Housing Items to Provide Housing, Provide Affordable Housing, State Density Bonus Law, which this is a density bonus project. We're providing 10% units reserved for lower-income households. We're also in the coastal areas, the local coastal program has been reviewed and comes into play on this site. This allows us to, you know, reinvigorate a site with a stunning new hotel and residential project on this location. Also, we're in the downtown district on top of that, so this is a mixed-use project, which will provide residents and visitors a location near downtown shops and restaurants, and it's less than -- it's about three-quarters of a mile to the Oceanside Transit Center. Manny went through this, so I won't spend a lot of time on project overview, but again, I think this is a nice rendering of the project taken from the northeast corner on Coast Highway. It's 360 units, 324 with market rate, 36 will be affordable to low-income level residents. Again, this replaces the iStore Motel 6 with a modern affordable hotel that we talked about. It won't be a highly amenitized hotel, therefore, the rates organically will be lower. The site with this development will include a significant amenities, including a courtyard, clubrooms and fitness centers, a rooftop pool, landscaping, and underground onsite parking. We'll show you a couple of details on that later. But, you know, beyond just providing the project, early on, you know, Mill Creek has been working with the city, and they wanted to develop a quality project that also provided tangible benefits for the city. In this slide, we kind of hit on a few of those. Again, this is revitalization of, you know, what's been termed as a higher crime area and site. This is high-quality architecture and high-end design for this project. This hotel will maintain affordable visitor accommodations in this area, also provide local residents to support local shops and restaurants, and again, new affordable housing units, as we talked about. And the project will provide significant fees to maintain and improve the quality of services for new and existing residents. And some of those fees, we go into estimated project development impact fees are approximately $9.2 million, which would provide, you know, badly-needed fees for Oceanside Unified of $1.8 million, and significant park fees of $1.6 million, and then ongoing annual CFD fees to pay for emergency services, $161,000. Yeah, Manny showed this rendering, but here's a full-scale rendering of the project taken from the southeast corner of Coast Highway. The Starbucks that's been built is actually shown in the foreground. And again, this is the layout of the building. It's a single building site layout with, you know, varying elevations, as we showed you, but some of the other amenities that will exist will be a wine bar and cafe in the lobby of the hotel, which will be available for public use. And then the apartment designs are designed to surround that interior courtyard and then to take advantage of a rooftop deck that's on the lower corner of the project, near the Neptune and Tremont corner. And landscaping and green space will cover approximately 17% of the project site. I think on to an item that we've had many comments, and we've spent a great deal of time working on, that's transportation and traffic at this site. It's one of the very first things that was discussed in this project, and one of the first items really we learned from the neighbors, some of their significance -- concerns, and worked with them closely on trying to meet those concerns, primarily providing a signal and signalizing the intersection at Coast Highway and Neptune Way. That was an early-on item that was discussed, and it's been incorporated into the project. Project will provide a signal or provide signalization of that intersection. The project wanted to do it, the applicant wanted to do it because it was important to the neighborhood, it's important to the project, and they've worked hard to make sure that the signal will stay as part of the project and work with staff to make sure it gets implemented. Some other bullets on transportation is that, you know, this location adjacent to the freeway on ramp in 76 and 5 will significantly limit traffic circulation directly through downtown Oceanside. Most of our traffic's going to go to the freeway. Traffic can go down Coast Highway, certainly to downtown, but study will show that most of it's going to go directly out to the freeway. We did do a full local transportation study. LLG prepared that. It was completed to city standards, reviewed by the city, and reviewed by Caltrans and approved by Caltrans as well. Included the analysis of 10 intersections within the study area and included 16 cumulative projects to talk about the overall cumulative traffic that may occur in the future downtown. Also, having North Coast Highway Neptune signalized as a project feature will allow, obviously, traffic from Neptune and the neighborhood behind there to head east and turn north or turn left onto Coast Highway with a signal where now they would have to go down to Tremont, down to Surf Rider, and go to that light, so that eliminates that traffic pattern. It provides a safer intersection for existing residents. Again, since unsignalized turns are dangerous, and also for pedestrians to cross the highway there. Also, the project screens out of needing a VNT analysis. That's been discussed and confirmed with staff long ago. Couple more items on the site itself and on parking. We're required to have approximately 472 parking spaces in the project. 493 are provided. That's, you know, a little over 21 over what's required. But really, the way these projects work, a hotel will have approximately 65% to 68% occupancy, so part of it will have vacancies, and that equates to about 20 spaces. And with move-in and move-outs of an apartment project of this nature, there's usually about 20 spaces that are left unfilled. So there's approximately 40 spaces that would be in flux with this parking garage. And there's also 13 guest spaces that have been provided. No guest parking is technically required with the density bonus project downtown, but that was something early on that was also discussed with the neighborhood and was important to them, so they went back and took a look at the design and incorporated guest parking within the parking garage. Again, this is a better view of the project, again, from the northwest -- northeast corner, and some of our courtyard amenities and imagery for the amenities that would be provided. And in addition, I know Manny had indicated that you got our response to SAFER's letter, which was sent in at 3:27 this afternoon, but we are well aware of that, and that's why we provided response. And we would just, you know, as we put on the record, that we think their argument lacks merit. The project studied the air quality item that they speak to in SAFER's letter. Project doesn't have an air quality impact on the interior indoor air quality issues. It's also been studied in our air quality analysis and was reviewed, so SAFER's mistaken in that we didn't look at that item. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and would thank you for your time. As I said, we have our team here tonight. We're available to answer any questions. We would ask that you follow staff's recommendation that this project meets several of the goals related to housing, economic development, and land use in the city's general plan, and we'd ask you for your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Did anyone sign up to speak on this item, Mr. Navarro?
We have six speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. You did not have to You did not have to sign up, actually, after we hear from them. If you wish to address this project, you can approach the podium, state your name, and then you have up to three minutes to speak.
Came up a lot quicker than I thought I would. My name's Steve Mashu. I'm in favor of this, this project, I think it's a great project. I think the other two projects along that street are also great along that North Coast Highway area. My concern is the pedestrian traffic that will be going to the beach. Sounds simple, doesn't it? But with, with the number of people that are going to be in these units, it'll be over 2,000 people when it's fully occupied. And that 2,000 people, some percentage of them are going to want to walk to the beach. There's two ways for them getting to the beach. One of the ways, one of the ways is going down Neptune to get onto the bike path, and the other one is to go down the Costa Street down to the bike path also. And all the people are going to have to go down underneath the highway, the railroad bridge, which is a really dangerous area to go through. That bridge is going to get replaced as part of double tracking, so the whole thing is going to be a, a major construction project over the next many years. That intersection at Coast Highway is a very, I mean, Pacific Street is a very dangerous place because the street intersections don't line up. Where our G exit is, where the street coming out of North Coast Village and, and the Pacific Street are all very difficult for people to get in and out. Well, the easy fix would be to put in a stop sign and more crosswalks, but I, I don't think that's really appropriate for this thing because of just too many total people. We need to solve a problem and do a study on it and figure out what the best options are for handling that. The second area is down at where the, the public street ends and North Coast Village's street begins, which is right where the old crossing was from, for the bridge. That area is, was, is basically abandoned. Peter Benias from the city, who was the planner for the bridge when we, when they were first starting it, promises, oh yeah, we don't have money to take care of that stub there right now, but we'll, we'll take care of it later. Of course, he retired before the project even got started, but, but it is sort of an ugly mess. Well, we sent a, a copy of a, we had some engineering drawings done by our, our North Coast Village architect. We, we passed them to the engineering department via Corey Jensen, and we thought something was going to happen, but engineering said, well, they don't have any money or time to worry about that problem. I think that whole, both of those areas need some serious study and maybe some of these development fees to help improve that, that whole region, for instance, a-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Macy, followed by Kathy P.
I've seen a lot of these projects come through and every time it's 36 units low income. How much is the low income? How much is the standard unit? My job in college was a hotel. Are you, how much is the rate per night going to be? All these questions I'd like an answer to, especially the 36 thing. I know it's, I think it's required that 10% has to be low income, but it doesn't really work for people my age, for anyone who doesn't have $100,000 salary. We need houses too, Esther, Yang. If you guys could like do projects that like benefit a lot more people, that would be really cool. And also the numbers, I'd like to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Kathy P.
Good evening, council members. My name's Kathy Pierce and I live on North Tremont Street, one block south of the proposed Madera Neptune project. I wanted to urge the council to vote in favor of the new building, which will be a welcome site over the existing Motel 6 and the many problems it brings with it. The builders have been very receptive to our neighborhood's concerns about the density of the building causing serious traffic problems on our residential streets of North Tremont, North Cleveland and Surf Rider. Our concerns were taken seriously by the builders, our city staff, and our city traffic engineers, whom we wish to thank for the end results, the new traffic light at Neptune, additional parking within the building, and a drop-off entry into the hotel from Coast Highway. The building is very attractive, much nicer than the existing ISOR, and will enhance this entry point into Oceanside for those coming in from the 5 and the 76, as well as our neighborhood, which sits just behind it. So I hope you will vote in favor of the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oscar, followed by Colleen.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. Oscar Delgado, I live on Tremont directly across the street from the project. I echo a lot of what Kathy said, I think the project is beautiful. You know, the Motel 6 is, I think Michael Eisner once said, you can't fall off the floor, right? That has been a huge ISOR for a long, long time. This project is, is beautiful and from day one, the developer worked with the residents on multiple occasions. The street light is huge improvement, it's an improvement right now for us, but definitely will help with the project and the traffic associated with that project. Also, they were receptive to dedicating additional visitor parking onsite, which was huge for us, as well as the drop-off that Kathy alluded to, so I'm, I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, both you and Kathy for being neighbors to speak on this project. Colleen, followed by Paul Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Colleen and I speak on behalf of my husband and I. We live close to this project and we support it. The California zoning laws have trapped our options for improving this property. Additionally, the Coastal Commission has locked all hotels within their jurisdiction into a price point that is a huge obstacle for anyone who wants to improve this location. The way to bring down cost of housing is to build more supply. The proposed project addresses all of these issues. My husband and I both wholeheartedly support this project, not only for the economical logic, but also to clean up our street. I hope you will vote in favor of this building.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Paul Gonzalez. I reside in Temecula, California. In particular, we also own, my wife and I, a little mobile home at the Miramar Mobile Home Park, which is adjacent to this project's site. We are tucked in site number 15, which is in the very corner of the park, and we are bordered by two of the property lines impacting this project. I had some very specific concerns that I addressed at the advisory committee in March, particularly concerns regarding the construction phases of the project, disruption and use of the property itself. I have some mature landscaping that abuts the walls, the removal of those walls and planters was the big concern, privacy and security during the construction, debris, et cetera, was a, a very personal concern. After the meeting, I had the opportunity to briefly speak with Dan Niebaum and John Coletti and then Brian Nord, and in particular, Brian responded. We met at the site and we looked things over, he took some photographs, I expressed my specific concerns, and he was very concerned as well. He took very good notes. We dialogued, we've been in touch back and forth. Since then, he's provided me some resolutions, some mitigations on how they might address some of my concerns. And having had that opportunity to meet with Brian personally and address those things, I am now in support of the project and I think it's a very good project overall for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, if you would like to address this project, please rise, approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. There were questions regarding a range of costs in terms of the hotel as well as the rental, the rental charges. Who would like to answer that question? This applicant, maybe?
Mayor Sanchez, I could provide some responses to the, with respect to the maximum rents. They're prescribed by state law and it's based on the income categories which those units are being reserved. So in this case, the units are being reserved for low-income categories, which represents 80% of area median income. So the maximum, as an example, a one-bedroom rent could be charged is $1,434 a month. The two-bedroom is $1,613 a month, and the studio is $1,255 a month. So that's the maximum rents that they could be charged. I apologize, I didn't hear the other second part of your question, so I'm happy to answer that if I can.
I, I think the question was stay as well as the living, the hotel.
Manny can answer that question.
Based on my research and, and studies that I've reviewed, the, the rate would have to be a hun, under $167 a night. That's the rate to be considered low, like low-cost visitor accommodation.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so responses have been given to the questions raised by the public. To the council, council member Robinson. I'm sorry.
The applicant has seven minutes, 40 seconds. For the record.
Okay, does the applicant wish to speak for seven minutes on rebuttal? Or less? He's coming down.
Dan Niebaum again for the applicant. I can, I can make it much less, but I, I just wanted to go back to something Manny just answered on the, the hotel room rate. We're not, I think we determined we're not actually locked into meeting low-cost affordable housing or lodging rates, but 167 is, again, could you clarify that?
Yeah, so-
That's the average rate in the coastal area for low cost?
That would be considered the rate that can be charged by hotels that provide low-cost visitor accommodation. That is the average.
It also should be noted that that changes every year. It's based on a statewide average, which fluctuates from year to year. So $167 today, it may be $180 next year, maybe $150 the year after that. So really all based on point in time in which we're discussing what's considered low-cost visitor accommodation.
All right.
Right, but I think on the record, we, we had determined that we're not bound by the, the need to maintain the threshold of low-cost rooms with, with this hotel, but by its natural design of being not highly amenitized, but a, a new hotel would organically have lower rates in the coastal area, but wouldn't technically be bound to the low-cost cap.
Okay, Mr. Mullen, is this a legal issue with, is this a Coastal Commission issue?
Coastal Commission can't mandate the rates that are going to be charged. There's legislation on point. It's, the city has attempted to ensure that there will be continued low-cost visitor-serving accommodations by working with the developer to make sure it is not highly amenitized and therefore more likely to fit within the low-cost accommodation as set forth in our zoning ordinance. So there is appropriate conditions included into the resolution that's, achieves that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions while I'm up here?
No, I think you used up your time. So back to the council and who was it that was? Okay, council member Robinson, yeah, the lights disappeared.
I know, that's okay. Couple questions and, and mostly have to do with the waivers, which you say they asked for, but they pretty much are entitled to them. And maybe you can explain to me in page, on page three of the top paragraph, it talks about a 40-foot-long, five-minute loading/unloading zone, I'm assuming for the hotel, but then on the waivers, in 15, it talks about loading space requirements. Is that, how does that all fit together? I'm not sure if they're the same thing or different.
Those are two different standards. The, there is a loading space within the subterranean parking. I think there's, there should be an additional spot, it describes it here in the staff report. The loading space for the hotel is something different. And originally, the project had proposed a turnout in the intersection closer to the hotel, but because it was in the intersection, that was an unsafe condition, and so there is excess right-of-way that can accommodate a drop-off zone north of the project site, and that's what's being proposed now. Just a, a five-minute yellow-curved loading zone for the hotel.
Is that on the, on the street when you say yellow curve?
That's on Coast Highway.
It's on the street?
Yeah.
Then, and I may be way wrong on this one, but wasn't a traffic circle, did we have one proposed for the 76 terminus at Coast Highway?
Council member Robinson, there was, as part of the overall master plan for the Coast Highway improvements, there was, there is a traffic circle proposed at the intersection of Coast Highway. So we have plans on file that show even with the improvements and redevelopment of this site, a traffic circle could still be accommodated, accommodated there. Now, as part of the Phase 1 Coast Highway improvements, this is not one of the intersections that's being proposed for improvement at this time. It'll come at a future date, so there is still ample room and, and space to accommodate a traffic circle.
Okay, which, which is good. What my concern is, Neptune, if, which is just feet away, if we signalize that, future, I, I'm just concerned about the backing traffic up into the traffic. It kind of, for me, it defeats the whole purpose of a traffic circle, you come out and now you got a signal right there. So I just, I don't know, hopefully we look at those things and plan for those things in the future. Again, it may be 10 years down the road, I don't know, but. And, and just a question on landscaping, where it says minimum landscaping, I look at the rendering, the, and it has the rendering of landscaping, is that generally what we would expect even with this minimum landscaping, that what the rendering shows, a few trees and?
I would say it's consistent with what we're seeing on, on other projects. The, the zoning ordinance only allows you to keep certain or count certain areas as landscaping, they have to be on the, on the ground. It can't include the planters like on the rooftop or in certain areas, those cannot be included, and so that's why the, the waiver is needed. It does provide a lot of landscaping, but certain areas cannot count towards that landscape requirement per the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, and I'm in favor of the project, so thank you.
Thank you. I, I did have a question about employee outdoor seating area being a waiver, oh, did, you did finish? Okay, because I thought you said thank you and I was like, okay, did I just cut you off? All right, okay. So my question is, is, is that not part of labor laws? Is that why it's, it's able to be waived versus minimum requirements?
It's part of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance requires that outdoor seating area, not, not labor laws. That's where we got the, the requirement, that's why they're asking for the waivers, because of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so all labor laws are being addressed by this project?
Council member, or Mayor Sanchez, that's not a, that's, it's part of our review of a project, we compare it to applicable regulations with respect to zoning. We don't compare or study labor law with respect to-
Well, I mean, in terms of a break room for the employees, I thought I read that somewhere else.
That would be internal to the project, not the external component that our zoning ordinance requires. I'm not familiar whether or not the labor law, whether federal or state, requires an outdoor dining area. That's something that our zoning ordinance requires.
We can say we're not waiving any labor requirements.
Okay.
The project would be subject to those.
Yeah, I, I saw waivers of employee-related things and I was wondering. Okay, Councilman Joyce.
Thank you. For the record, I did want to ask, I spent some time at the Miramar Mobile Home Park today, and there was concerns about, there's a wall that backs up to several of the units there, and they don't have a lot of personal space behind their units already, and there was talk about the wall being moved even closer to where their units are now because of some kind of discrepancy. I just wanted to know if their concerns have been addressed, and I just want to make sure that it's on the record.
Their concerns have been addressed. That's no longer the case. The walls will not be moving. Their condition of approval, planning condition of approval 129 states that the existing wall will remain in place or that the applicant will rebuild the wall. It's no longer proposed as a tube steel fence, so you'll, you'll still have your privacy and the wall will not be moved into the, into the mobile home park.
Thank you, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Go ahead, you go, I'll go after.
Go ahead, you go, I'll go after you.
I'm glad we're able to bring some relief to the neighborhood with revitalizing that property. Five years ago, we do have a challenge in Oceanside with some of our motels and hotels and some of the crime and blight associated with them. So five years ago, Councilmember Weiss and I brought forward an item to actually examine those, figure out are worst performers are the ones causing the biggest impact. Could we get an update on that at some point? Just not tonight, just as we're moving forward with this one, could we get an update on that as well down the road?
Yes, we'd be happy to provide that update.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move adoption of the resolutions. Councilmember Joyce?
So I just wanted, just a couple more things, because this is a really big project and I represent the area, so I just wanted to weigh in on a few different items, because there are a lot of waivers. And this, you know, there's a reason that we have those rules in place. A fourth of the required open space, minimum landscaping, the loading spaces, the minimum parking, which is a big concern of the neighbors that I spoke with. We also have reset, correct me if I'm wrong, the inclusionary housing ordinance to 15%. Are we waiting for Coastal Commission to come back on that still?
That's correct, Councilmember Joyce. That's, Coastal Commission is, we need their certification to be able to implement that in the coastal zone. But should be noted, this project submitted an SB 330 application would have precluded 15%.
I mostly asked because it was brought up earlier about why 10%. Just so you know, we did 15%, but we're waiting on everybody else to get their ducks in a row so that we can actually hold everybody accountable to that. So the other piece of this is that it's an incredibly dense project. It's eight stories tall. I think it's going to really knock some hair back when people drive up the 76 and go, holy shit, what is this? It's huge. I am very, I'm concerned, it sounds like a wonderful general project, but its density is 210 dwelling units per acre, which is, our old density was 43 units per acre. So it's just, it is a massive project. I don't think we can skate by it. I know that we, our staff worked on it for many years to try and come to a resolution, and so I want to recognize that work. It is important work that lots of the neighbors had. So my concern at this moment is that we have projects like this, partly because we removed, I say we, the council removed the density caps on downtown in 2019. And because we don't have the ability to limit the height of these buildings, now we have unlimited density and limited heights. We're going to get lots of stories. And because we're getting so many of these projects, one off at a time, you know, has an impact on a neighborhood, 15 of them downtown has an impact on a city. And I don't feel secure that we have a strong plan for what the future of downtown looks like with 15 projects like this. And we are getting applications frequently. So I would ask that the council direct staff, as well as moving on this item, which I will support in isolation, that we develop a comprehensive downtown area plan that provides direction on the vision for downtown about how our infrastructure is going to handle the potential doubling of the number of residents that we have in the downtown area. How we're going to handle mobility, how people are going to get around an area, both by car, but also by walking and biking in a place where things should be accessible. How parking, how open space, how noise is going to be handled. How coastal access is going to be handled, as was brought up tonight. People that live there are going to want to get to the coast. How are they going to access it? Our objective design requirements in the downtown area. I'm very adamant that this needs to happen, and it needs to be happening quickly because of the rapidity we are getting these requests in. So I'll second the motion, but I would like to add that we direct staff to expedite the downtown planning project.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
Quick question for staff. I know I'm going to ask a hard math question off the top. If this, if we were to, if we had a minimum 15% inclusionary or affordable housing, how many units would this have instead of the 300 and something? Just off the top of your head. I mean, how much would increase unit number and density?
Another 14%. It's, I can do it.
I take just a random estimate.
Well, it's half of 36, add half of 36 to it.
But also with the, but then with the market rate units on top of that, we would be significantly higher, correct?
Councilmember Keim, so the way it works right now with the unlimited density, there is no base density for which to start calculating densities from. So what we would do is do it backwards. The applicants proposing 360 units, the 15% set aside would have resulted in 54 income-restricted units as opposed to 36.
But since we have a density cap, they'd build more market rate to offset those.
They could have.
Yes, and so it would be a lot higher. So my point is, if we're going to push, we're pushing for two opposite things. We're pushing for more affordability and more affordable units and going from 10 to 15. And then we're criticizing when we have more density, and I think we've got to be realistic. If we want 15% higher density or more affordable, we're going to have higher density, and it's going to be a challenge. I don't, I agree with the planning and having a downtown, but we just, this is a challenge on council, is we ask for one thing and then we go in that direction and then we don't like it.
All right, no other lights. There is a motion and a second. With respect to the request for direction to staff, is staff working on any, any studies in terms of transitation? Like, I know we're working on micro-transit and other things in the downtown, especially there, and then South Coast, I mean, South Coast Highway, North Coast Highway. Is this something that you can also be looking at?
Yeah, so just to provide a little bit of additional context, so we do actually have money budgeted to do objective design standards, and that is in the Plating Department's work plan. So that will provide us with an additional tool to really guide the way the development looks citywide, including downtown. With respect to a downtown master plan, quite frankly, I would agree that it's probably time to really take a look at the downtown and develop a comprehensive plan for the downtown. We don't currently have the resources budgeted to do that plan, but certainly I do think that there's value in there. And I've had many conversations with a variety of folks in the community that have a stake in downtown, and they all agree that we probably need to do a downtown master plan. So I would certainly be supportive of that.
With all the changes in the law, basically.
I would be supportive of that, if, our staff would be supportive of that if we were to receive that council direction. There are a variety of mobility options being explored. Of course, we have the ghost side shuttle that's running around right now. We were also recently informed by NCTD that we're one of the candidate cities to provide a micro-transit system.
Yeah.
And I had a conversation with them this week. Currently, we're fourth in line in the North County cities, but, you know, they did say that with some financial participation on behalf of the city, that they would be willing to look at accelerating that program to get that micro-transit service sooner here, and I actually think that's something worth exploring.
Did they say October, was that 2025 or 2024?
I believe it's that. Right now, we're actually scheduled, I think, in 2026 for the fourth city.
2026.
But again, if we were to be able to identify some resources, then we could probably get them to do it quicker, and it's something that we'll certainly look at.
Right, so do we need, can we just add this to the motion? Or do we need, for purposes of this project, do we need to have separate direction staff?
Well, the project doesn't require this direction.
Right.
So it's a council policy direction. It sounds like, I don't want to speak for the city manager, that he would need to come back to you with a proposal to fund that effort. So I think maybe what would be appropriate to accomplish your goal is a referral to the city manager to bring back within a defined amount of time a proposal to fund a downtown planning effort. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, and how much time, Mr. Barriga, would you need?
I think that we could probably come back in September.
Okay, so for purposes of this motion, which is only, for this item, which is just the project, we're not going to include it in the motion, but we are giving direction to staff to come back in September?
Yeah, unless there's a majority opposition to that, but I don't, not hearing any.
There is.
So I think the city manager heard you, he'll come back in September with a funding plan.
All right, thank you. There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Five zero.
Do you want us to go ahead and give that direction at this time?
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item number 35 is adoption of resolutions confirming the diagrams and assessments for each of the following landscape maintenance districts for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and ordering the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And there, for the record, Mr. Mullen, do I need to read all of those? Or will staff, is it okay for staff to do it?
They don't need to be read, they're agendized.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and public.
Staff only.
Staff and public, and we had, I had a couple of meetings with residents.
Staff only.
Thank you. Ms. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We only received one correspondence, which was forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you. We're going to begin testimony by Vicky Gutierrez, the real estate manager. Ms. Gutierrez?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Vicky Gutierrez, the real estate manager for the Public Works Department Property Management Division. Staff is recommending council to approve the item before you for the 11 of the city's landscape maintenance districts. The city landscape maintenance districts were formed pursuant to the authority granted by the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 of the California Streets and Highway Code. And each year, council is required to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed assessments to be levied on these districts. Assessments will remain the same for fiscal year 2425 as they were for the previous fiscal year for all districts within the staff report, except for Douglas Park, Bohemie Ridge, Rancho Hermosa, and Vista Del Rio districts, which these have CPI adjustments to their rates. The proposed assessments identified within the engineers' reports will be used to pay the costs for the districts within each of the 11 districts for the fiscal year 2425 to cover operations, maintenance, and material costs associated with each district. That concludes my presentation. Staff recommends council to approve the item before you for the 11 Oceanside Landscape Maintenance Districts for fiscal year 2425, adopting resolutions confirming the diagram and assessments for each of the districts, and ordering the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2425 for said districts. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. How many of these speakers have signed up?
We have two speakers sign up for this item.
All right, let's go ahead and hear from them first.
Okay, our first speaker is Shelley Parker, to be followed by Neil Hancock.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council. Just a quick, this may be an ignorant question. I live in Rancho San Luis Rey, and this is for maintenance on trees and landscaping and that kind of thing, correct?
For these specific districts.
Okay, is the area between the top of the hill on El Camino at Oceana down to Mission included in this, in any of these?
No.
Okay. Well, the trees, they seem to be able to go from Oceana to Mesa and do the center divides, but the area between Oceana and Mission, the trees are in horrendous shape, so I guess...
Right, that would be a separate topic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Neil Hancock.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. This is the difference 35 years makes. This one is what the original LMAD in 1988 was for our area, and I'm talking about the Marlato Highlands. The second one is what it's whittled down to, been erased to. The audit that you guys just had done by NBS is flawed, and part of the reason that it's flawed is not by the current property management folks, but your prior property management folks. They failed to even look at the fact that we have, in essence, just to make the argument, haves and have-nots. Haves that have a slope adjacent to their home that is actually watered and maintained by the city contractors, and then the have-nots, those that are in the, we have 133 homes. 78 of them have, and 7 in 55 have not. Do not have a slope that is maintained by the city's contractors or watered. We take care of them ourselves. For the difference in price between the two, it's 50 bucks a year. That works out to $4.11 difference. Can you imagine how much water is spent on those homes? And the audit doesn't even address that. More importantly, the budget that you're approving tonight, once again, doesn't have any tree service in it, and every one of these LMADs has trees in it. There's no maintenance, there's no money to remove them if they fall, and a lot of these are old. The trees are in bad shape and they're falling down, and who does that leave it to? In our particular case, it leaves it to the homeowners association to come in and step in and do that, and we've done that. We're stepping up to the plate. We're holding meetings to look at getting some more money, because there's no doubt, 30 years ago, you know, you used to fill your car for 30 bucks. Now you can't even, you know, make it to the gas station for 30 bucks.
You're speaking to the Marlato Highlands, correct?
I am, I am. And ultimately, the NBS thing says, give it back to the HOA. It can't come back to the HOA in our circumstance, because we have the haves and the have-nots. If we don't uniformly provide a service for everybody equally and fairly, then it's just not fair, and we can't do it. So we've got a problem, but we're trying to work it out with the city.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Please rise, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Ott, 127 Shereline. I attended virtually Russ Cunningham and our city's general plan, mega of attendance-type of a deal, whereas for the...
Are you speaking to this, to the landscape maintenance districts?
Yes, I am.
Okay, because I didn't hear that.
What it is, is that there was numerous referrals to the city and its landscape. And what it was, was about the weeds that needed to be abated.
Which landscape district, could you state which one?
There were different ones that were mentioned into the program by different individuals. There were over 200 attendees. I did not write down all 200 attendees. They, people had a lot of different concerns. What happened was, as I mentioned, a lot of communities in California are using goats to take and naturally abate some of those problems. Some of them are actually, some cities are actually developing their own goat herds with taking and incorporating the local high schools through 4H systems. What they need to do in here in our city is start looking at that natural way of sustainability. And they've worked with our local fire department. That will take and cut down costs. We will take and be able to do it naturally, reasonably, cost-effectively. Now, what we can do is look at it, rank it, and include this in addressing abatement costs. costs. And I think it's something that we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other requests to speak on this item? It's the landscape maintenance districts numbered here.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. My name is Richard Newton, and I live in Santa Fe Mesa District, and my house abuts to one of those hillsides. And over the years, I've had the opportunity to talk to the landscape maintenance staff, primarily a gentleman by the name of Tom Woodford, who retired a few years ago. And we talked quite a bit on these issues, because at that time, maintenance wasn't keeping up with what needed to be done. And he indicated that the problem was that there are assessment fees that are fixed and can only be changed for that particular district with a vote of all the residents in that district, and they hadn't been able to get it passed for an increase of even only five dollars a month. Currently, I'm paying on my property taxes a little under a hundred and eighty dollars a year, which is less than fifteen dollars a month for maintenance of that back slope. And it's not enough. Costs have gone up. I'm not one to advocate for tax increases, and I know it's not a tax, it's a fee, but the reality is everything costs money, and those fees do need to be raised to get proper maintenance back there. It's a, there's a landscape issue as far as not enough ground cover, so there's an erosion, erosion issue, and there's also a fire issue where they're not getting enough of the dry brush out and the dead brush. I don't know what the answer is, because it looks like legally, the city's hands are tied, because they can't raise the fees for that district without an approval vote of the people. And many people who don't live on the hillside slope don't see that as a problem. So it's only a small minority of us in that district that actually see the hillside as a problem. So I'm not sure what the correct answer is, legally or bureaucratically, but they do need to raise more money for maintenance on those hillside slopes, however that's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other requests to speak on this item? Please stand and approach the podium. I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, and I don't think there were any other questions. Thank you very much. Did you have anything else to state?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. To council, Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
There's a motion and a second. No other lights, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you. Item number thirty-six is adoption of a resolution approving the engineers' report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and ordering the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2024, 2025, for the Oceanside Lighting District, Assessment District Number Two-Dash-1991. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff.
Yes, staff only.
Staff.
Ms. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence on this item.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead. Ms. Gutierrez didn't move, move a ditch at all. So she's going to be testifying regarding this item as well. Ms. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Vicky Gutierrez, real estate manager, Property Management Division, Public Works Department. The item before you we're recommending for approval regarding the Oceanside Lighting District Assessment District Two-Dash-1991. It was formed pursuant to the, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 of the California Streets and Highway Code. And again, we're required to come before you to conduct a public hearing for you to vote regarding the assessments to be levied upon the district. And since the formation of the lighting district in 1991, the district assessments have remained the same. One of our largest components of the expenses related to this district are the electric consumption, and those continue to rise, but right now, we are fine. The total assessments to be levied by the lighting district for fiscal year 2425 will be one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that concludes my presentation. Again, staff recommends council to approve the item for the lighting district assessment District Two-Ninety-Dash-1991, adopting the resolution conforming, excuse me, confirming the diagram and assessments for fiscal year 2425, and ordering the assessments to be levied for this fiscal year. And I'm now available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not.
We do not, okay. This is a public hearing. You did not have to sign up to speak on this item. Again, this is the lighting district that we are talking about at this time. If you'd like to address the council on this item, please rise, approach the podium, state your name, and you can speak for up to three minutes. I see, that's Manny. I see no one standing, so I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing, and back to council. Who said that? Okay. Did you get, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Item number thirty-seven. This is a conduction of a public hearing to receive community input on the City of Oceanside's application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD, for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 Preservation and Reinvestment Initiative for Community Enhancement called PRICE. And it's a competition. An approval of the submission of the PRICE application with the inclusion of any revisions made as a result of the public comments, and authorize the city manager or designee to accept grant funds, conduct all negotiations, and sign and submit all documents necessary to implement and manage the scope of work contemplated by the grants. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff and members of the public.
Staff, the public, and I sat in on the, I was on the liaison for the Housing Commission last night, who discussed it.
All right. Ms. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We just only received a correspondence from the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety, which was distributed to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and begin with Ms. Leilani Heinz, Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Ms. Heinz?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public here this evening. We are conducting a public hearing this evening to receive public input on the Preservation Reinvestment Initiative for Community Enhancement, or PRICE Grant, that has been allocated to help cities preserve manufactured housing communities and the residents within those communities. This is a first-time-ever kind of pilot program by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. They've made about two hundred and thirty-five million dollars available nationwide in a competitive funding program. Twenty-five awards will be made to all local governments nationwide. There's a minimum of a five million dollar award. There is a very heavy public participation requirement in why we're here before you this evening for a public hearing. The application itself was made available on June tenth for a fifteen-day public review and comment period. The deadline to submit the application is July tenth, and with this evening being the last meeting of this council until August, we're here before you this evening. So in Oceanside, we have seventeen manufactured housing communities or home communities. The majority of these communities are for seniors, sixty-six percent of those communities are senior-focused. Fourteen of them happen to be in low, moderate-income census tracts. We are proposing three different types of activities, mostly focused on the rehab and repair of individual manufactured homes, either the rehab, the repair, and in some cases, the replacement of homes. There is a requirement under the grant that if these homes are pre-1976, that you actually look to replacing them. And then the second part would be a program that would be focused on the actual parks themselves and providing loans for infrastructure and enhancement or rehabilitation of community facilities or for major infrastructure within the park, given the age of many of our mobile home communities. And then this is a HUD program. Under the guidelines, we are allocating twenty percent of the funds that are requested for staff's and the city's cost for administration of the program, for a total request of almost fifteen million dollars. This program does fall under the CDBG or HUD statutory framework. The program is really focused on trying to bring affordable housing and affordable rents to the community. So participation is limited to low-income residents. So for our manufactured park residents who want to participate in rehabbing or replacement of their manufactured home, they have to meet the eighty percent AMI HUD standard, and the chart's there before you. We are placing priority, because many of our parks are senior parks, our priority is for very low-income residents at fifty percent AMI. So for example, a household of two, fifty percent AMI or very low income is a household that's making just over sixty thousand a year. And on the low-income side, for a household of two, you're making about ninety-seven thousand dollars a year. Those are the HUD definitions. The program also requires that your participation, that the home and the park would either, would also be deed restricted to ensure affordability. The minimum requirement is a fifteen-year deed restriction, so for any park residents who are having their unit rehabbed, we'd request that the deed restriction be in place for fifteen years, making sure that the rent that they're paying is affordable, the costs are outlined before you on the table. If you are looking to replace the mobile home or the manufactured home, if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in assistance, it's twenty years, and you jump up to two hundred and fifty thousand, which might be the case, twenty-five years of deed restrictions. For those manufactured communities that are looking to participate with infrastructure enhancement, because that can be a big endeavor, we are looking at a deed restriction for thirty years or more to maintain the affordability of the housing within that manufactured community. So because there is a required process for public participation, we did attend the housing, presented to the Housing Commission last night, provided an opportunity for input. The Housing Commission voted unanimously to recommend the city council submit this application to HUD. All public input that will be received will be noted in Appendix H of the application. Some of the questions or concerns that we received last night were related to understanding of the deed restrictions, the affordability, noting that really loans should be given to park residents and not necessarily to businesses or to park owners, wanting to understand better the data of who fits into the program from an income perspective, also looking for collaborations and partnerships to leverage with this program. And then, as you had submitted this evening, a letter regarding incorporating resilient construction practices in preparation for wildfires. And then there was also a comment related to the ability to use funds for actual acquisition of a park. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council conduct the public hearing this evening, receive that community input, and then approve the submission of the PRICE application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by the deadline of July tenth. That concludes staff's report this evening, and we're available to answer questions.
Thank you, and is this, this is the federal, there is also going to be a state?
So that's accurate. So this is a federal submission to HUD. The state of California is also competing against us in that they have put in, they are putting in an application themselves for seventy-five million dollars to fund their MORE program, which is a very similar program, offering rehabilitation, loans, funds for purchase of a mobile home park to local jurisdictions. So if the city is not able to be successful in its application, we would hope that the state is successful, and then the city would then apply to the state for the MORE application. The city actually did apply for the MORE funding earlier in the year, but we were unsuccessful in obtaining that from the state.
All right.
The only other jurisdiction I'm aware of in the San Diego County region is the city of Chula Vista that's also applying for the program.
For applying for the federal?
For the federal program, yes.
Thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. And we have two speakers, Shelley Parker and Jimmy Knott.
Ms. Parker?
Yeah, good evening again, Shelley Parker. Disclosure, I was at the house, I am a housing commissioner, so I was privy to the presentation last night. What I really wanted to do is just publicly thank Director Heinz for actually getting everything together and applying for this. I know that it was short-term, a short amount of time in order to do this, and this is how I see the city actually supporting mobile home park residents to try and do this. And so it was important, and I, so I thank you very much, Director Heinz, and I hope we're successful. If not, then we'll go after the MORE project. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, one twenty-seven, Sherri Lane, Los Alamos Mobile Village, homeowners rep. Yes, I echo that, and thanks to Director Heinz and also Linda Walsh, CEO of MAC, for bringing this to the attention of the city and making this opportunity available for the city to help us, and my people and my park, and those in surrounding mobile home parks. I would encourage the city to do some, shall I say, presentations to the feds by giving the number of pre-1976 homes within the city, also developing the number of parks that were developed before 1976, which I think you will all find all of the parks were. And the needs could be easily pointed out through the Title XXV inspections that have been recently done, and also the health and safety inspections within the parks, showing the needs within the community, thus showing impetus that the direct needs for the funding within the parks. And also, I would recommend that the people within the parks, having their homes without the names, it could be easily done, the health, the risks, the income standards, could be brought forward to show to the federal government that the needs and necessity are prevalent. We also could take and accentuate the need for matching grants and assistance programs. And the city itself could go on record and saying, we have a permit process, and we're willing to take and discount it, or even provide relief in order to take and do it if this federal government turns and provides the grants to the city, to show that we're willing to work with the federal government. There are many things that can be done to show that we need and we're willing to participate actively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. This is very much a part of the process to be able to apply for these funds. It's a pilot project. If you wish to speak to the council and/or address this item, please approach the podium. I do have one person there, there's also another podium. State your name, and you can speak for up to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Sue Rita Clark, and my biggest question is, where is this money coming from, from the federal government, when we are so much in debt to the deficit, and our city is so, not even balanced the budget, our state, I mean, hasn't balanced the budget? Where's this money coming from, and how is our taxes going to be impacted?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this specific item, this application for the PRICE program? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and go to the council. Before I go to Councilmember Joyce, I do want to also thank very much Ms. Heinz. I saw this come across my desk by Ms. Parker. I quickly looked it up, realized that there was a federal portion along with the state, and it was a quick turnaround. And I want to say thank you so much for, because I know I urged you to do this. And I want to say thank you so much for, because I know I urged you to do this, and thank you for doing it, because I think that this really gave a lot of hope to the mobile home park community in ways that we can work together to address the need for improvements at the parks. Councilmember Joyce?
Also, want to briefly just thank Linda Walsh for bringing it to my attention, and Director Hines for really taking the bull by the horns. We have so many residents living in manufactured home situations that can feel pretty isolated, and there are times when the living conditions are really just unacceptable because of the deterioration of these much older units. And with seniors on fixed income, there is just, there's no help in sight. This is, this is a lifesaver for some folks, and I really appreciate you going after it. I know it was a huge lift for the department, and a lot of work went in, and after all that, we still may not get it. But that's the devastating world of applying for grants at a federal level. We appreciate you, no matter the outcome. Thank you for taking the effort.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, we are conducting the public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and move approval of the application. Councilmember Robinson?
I'll second it, but I also want to say thank you to staff, and it sounds like we all got notified from somebody about this thing and passed it on, so thanks. And I would just comment about, to those that say, oh, we could do more. If you look at this application process and the things that they ask for, it, it's a lot of work in a short period of time, and I think just the fact that you hit all these spots is worthy of praise, so thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to item number 27, which is acceptance of $59,600 in grant funds from the fiscal year 2023 Urban Area Security Initiative, that's UASI, awarded to the city for UASI-sponsored training. Appropriation of these funds to the fire and police departments and authorization for the city manager or designate to execute all related grant documents. Who was the person who's asked to pull?
Ryan Jones and Macy.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
City Council, there has never been a wrong reason to oppose an increase in police funding due to the well-recorded history of racialized police violence in America and their origins as slave patrols. More so, the purpose of the Urban Area Security Initiative is quote-unquote "fighting terror", which has consistently been used as a pretext for taking away our civil liberties, such as the 2001 Patriot Act, and accepting these funds only gives way to an increased police state. Oceanside Police do need extra training in areas like nonviolent tactics and avoiding profiling and discrimination. However, that should come out of their own budget without any increase of funding. I don't know if the council has heard, but people generally like firefighters and trust them significantly more. I believe that if this grant is accepted, these funds should be allocated, the totality, to the firefighters. Finally, I have to question what is defined as terrorism? Would the Black Lives Matter protests of 2020 be considered terrorism? The Roe v. Wade protests of 2022? People have pejoratively called the kiffiays that I am wearing and many others are wearing here terror scarves for the crime of symbolizing Palestinian culture. Would, would this training falsely identify them as such? Please, can we not let Oceanside slide into fascism? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Macy?
Yeah, I have a similar concern. I've done a little bit of research on this. So the UASI program is for high-threat, high-density urban areas, and I have a map of those. There's not many of them. So I'm curious why Oceanside is one of them. How do we get designated a high-density, high-threat area on this map? And there's a couple quotes that I just want to make clear that, you know, the way these funds have been used in other cities has happened with what Ryan was talking about, and has been used to harass and target Muslim and Black and Brown communities. So I have some statistics from it. So, oh, well, just some issues too. Tying emergency funding to counterterrorism through UASI, DHS provides a funding stream for policing that goes largely unchecked. Police departments don't face the same level of local oversight when they get funds and technology through DHS grants. By design, it's harder to track and push back against policing technologies that are used in the name of counterterrorism. UASI tells us exactly what's wrong with the government's logic, that counterterrorism can be an excuse to perpetually expand surveillance and policing. Additionally, UASI reveals one of the mechanisms that corporations rely on to access federal dollars. Grant programs like UASI channel federal funds to corporations that create, sell, and maintain surveillance and policing tech that targets Muslim, Black, Brown, Asian, Indigenous, and immigrant communities. When you look into it, the companies involved in this grant, it's Microsoft, it's Motorola. They shouldn't have a say in how the funding is used on Microsoft and Motorola. That's kind of ridiculous. So I would just ask for a lot of, like, insight onto how this money is going to be spent, how we determine that we are one of those cities. The way I understand it is that you had to apply for this grant, and given the size of this room, I feel like there's other grants we should apply for. Yeah. Bye.
Thank you very much. I will say that the staff report actually states what they will be used for. I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Is there a second? Okay. Deputy Ray Keim?
Just going to move approval.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Onto our general items, item number 32, which we're probably all waiting for. Is adoption of a resolution calling for an election to extend, but not raise, the one-half cent general transactions and use sales tax known as, known now as Measure X, for a period of 10 years and introduction of an ordinance, amending Sections 34.6 and 34.6.16 of the Oceanside City Code. Staff recommends that the city council place this item on the ballot to allow Oceanside voters to decide this important issue. Again, we have a report by Michael Gossman, who is Assistant City Manager. Mr. Gossman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you mentioned, tonight I'll be providing a recommendation related to renewal of Measure X. And additionally, our consultant, Jared Boygan, will be presenting findings from the scientific, statistically-validated community surveys as they related to Measure X that were conducted in November 2023 and May of 2024. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution calling for an election to extend, but not raise, the one-half cent general sales tax, sales transaction and use tax, known currently as Measure X, for a period of 10 years, and to place this item on the ballot to allow voters to decide this issue. In November 2018, Oceanside voted to increase the sales tax by half cent for a period of seven years. This sales tax has generated roughly $18 million per year and has been allocated toward infrastructure, roads, public safety, and addressing homelessness. This measure expires in April of 2026. Just wanted to mention some of the accomplishments that Measure X has made in our community. This is not fully inclusive of everything that it's done, but it is some examples. We've repaired over 560 lane miles of streets, constructed a new modern fire station, a fire training tower. We've made beachfront improvements. We've created a successful EMT program and medic squad. We've expanded the community service officer program and reduced crime. It also funds a second homeless outreach team, transitional bridge housing, and family reunification efforts. It's worth noting that overall homelessness was down 11% in 2024 versus 2023. We've also funded $2 million to El Corazon Park Site One, and we've served over 1,400 youth with various programs and services fully funded by Measure X. Staff enlisted the services of True North Research to conduct a scientific survey of voters on the feasibility of a renewal and community priorities. As I mentioned, these surveys were conducted in November 2023 and May of 2024. I'm now going to hand it over to Jared Boygan to go over some of these findings from the most recent tracking survey. Thank you, Michael. Mayor, members of council, Jared Boygan with Team Civics. I'm going to briefly walk through some findings from the scientific community surveys conducted, as Michael mentioned. So these surveys were conducted by True North Research. That is not my firm. I want to be clear, I'm presenting this data on behalf of them. Our role is to coordinate public outreach, communication, research related to the Measure X renewal. That's the capacity we're here tonight, but I'll present these findings and certainly am able to answer as many questions as I can, if, if there are any. Purpose of the study is to make sure, provide an up-to-date assessment to see if renewing the Measure X sales tax is feasible, and by feasible, we mean supported by a majority of likely voters within the city of Oceanside, identifying whether the measure's priorities are consistent with community priorities, and gather information relative to communications outreach. What questions does your community have? What do they already understand about this? Briefly, I'll speak to methodology. Again, I didn't conduct the survey, but it is a scientifically valid, a statistically valid survey of 582 completed interviews of likely November 2024 voters using stratified and cluster sampling methodology. And questionnaires were recruited by phone, by email, and by text to unique online surveys. There is a security mechanism, a person can only take the survey one time in order to make sure that the person that you're soliciting is the person who takes the survey, and that the demographic balance can be met, and the survey is statistically valid. So one question we asked is about the quality of life in Oceanside. These are very good numbers, 56, almost 57% good, 16% excellent, only about 4% poor, very poor. These are very nice numbers to see related to the quality of life here. We did ask people, this is an open-ended question, we didn't suggest these answers to them. This is what they said on their own. What changes would you like to see to improve the city of Oceanside? And see, addressing homelessness is right there at the top. Limiting growth and development and also providing more affordable housing, both appear kind of near the top, you can see, and that's not surprising. It's typical, we see that even though those, like they're in conflict, those are different individuals who have those, you know, differing opinions. Improving infrastructure and roads, increasing public safety, these are typical things that we see, particularly today in California, on these kinds of things. And then we present a mock-up of the initial ballot test. This is very similar to the actual legal ballot language that appears in your materials tonight, been prepared by the city attorney. This language also passed city attorney muster. We think that that's important for the statistical validity of the survey, to provide sample ballot language in this form, and that's what we've done. And you can see the results that on the initial ask, when we first ask at the beginning of the survey, we get 34% definitely yes, 34% probably yes, for a total of 68. We provide people a little bit more information during the course of the survey about how the money is spent, what are some reasons why the money might be used the way it is, what are some arguments in favor of using it? You can see support increases at that point to 40% definitely yes to 33% probably, for a total of 73%. And then we provide some negative information to people, might not be the right time, economics are tough, cost of groceries, et cetera, and support comes back down to close to the original 67% yes. So in California, for the renewal of Measure X, as you all know, it's a simple majority, 50% plus one, that's needed for approval. So all these numbers comfortably above, even the margin for error, as I described this, the methodology of the survey, has a margin of error of about 4.5%, so comfortably above that margin for error. And beyond that, I would say, strong urgency from your voters. This is not a close question in their minds. They're happy with the quality of life and happy with city services, but also they see the wisdom of maintaining this revenue source. So these are very strong numbers, numbers that other cities in the county would be very jealous of and would like to have themselves, I can tell you. Support by key subgroups, you can see that the measure is passing with all demographics by party registration, which is rare to see consensus across party lines in California on issues. This is one issue people do agree with regardless of party. There's effectively no difference by age from a statistical standpoint, those differences are not significant statistically, and there's slight differences between homeowners and renters, but again, not significantly differences. Again, this is an issue that seems to unify fairly every likely voter in, in Oceanside. We give them a list of priorities, projects, and improvements, ways that the money is used and can be used, and those are ranked here by, again, the order of voters saying which they strongly favor, which is the dark green bar, and how much they somewhat favor using some of the money for this particular item, and add it together, you know, is how much they favor it. You can see the dark green bars are very high across this whole chart, starting at the top with fixing potholes, maintaining street sidewalks and infrastructure, keeping trash and pollution out of local waterways and off our beaches, skipping down a little bit, fire protection and paramedic, and quick response to 911 emergencies. You see addressing homelessness again here. We see maintaining parks, beaches, recreation facilities, removing graffiti, trash, and litter that people dump along streets and sidewalks and public areas, providing police services, including neighborhood police patrols, crime prevention. As Mr. Gossman said a few minutes ago, these are very typical uses of Measure X proceeds, and you can see that community seems very much in tune with the way you've been spending the money. They seem to appreciate what you've done with the money. They support this continued list of uses, and they'd like to see these continued investments. So key conclusions, does a Measure X renewal continue to appear feasible for November 2024? The answer is a resounding yes. The support was resilient across the entire survey, both surveys, also the November 2023 as well as the May 2024 tracking survey. Voters do value the services they receive. There's natural support for the, for the measure, and all of the projects and services do resonate, as I showed in the prior slide. Of course, there are always challenges. You know, there's a little bit of receptiveness to opposition arguments, as you saw, went from 73 down to 67 at that point in the survey, and we are heading into a challenging electoral climate in November with hyper-partisanship and other tax measures on the ballot and, you know, concerns about the economy, et cetera. All that said, with the numbers that you have here, you know, we strongly recommend that you proceed with the ballot. All right. Thank you very much, Jared. I appreciate that. I just want to mention, in addition, this polling, along with our biannual public meetings of the Citizens Oversight Committee and the Budget Workshop that's held each March, are what guides spending priorities and the spending plan. One change that we made this year, which I really like, is moving the spring Citizens Oversight Committee to after the Budget Workshop, which I think further increases participation by the, both council and the public in crafting the spending plan. We're going to maintain this practice going forward, as it allows us to go to the COC after getting feedback from council at the workshop. Also, should council choose to place this measure on the ballot, staff will be creating a space on the city's website where people can submit ideas and comments as they relate to Measure X, and this will further inform future spending plans. We are proud of the fact that the city is using data, such as what Jared just shared, presented to, to guide our spending decisions going forward. So getting into a little quick analysis, just some background, a general tax extension measure requires approval of 50% of voters plus one. The deadline to place a measure on the November 5 ballot is August 9, and requires approval by 2/3 of the city council, or in this case, 4/5. Although the Measure X half-cent sales tax does not expire until April 2026, any proposal to extend the measure must be presented to voters during a general election, which occurs every two years, thus why we're going now. The average sales tax rate in cities throughout California is 8.68%. With Measure X, the sales tax rate currently applied to the, in the city of Oceanside is 8.25%. So I'm going to read the ballot language to you, because I think it's important that you see what would be on the statement. If authorized, it would say, "To continue providing funding to maintain and improve general city services in Oceanside, including road repairs, infrastructure maintenance, safe parks, beach and habitat restoration, fire, paramedic, and 911 emergency response, police patrols, crime prevention, and addressing homelessness." Shall the city of Oceanside extend the existing half-cent sales tax at the current rate, no increase, for 10 years, providing approximately $19 million annually for general government use, with citizen oversight, independent audits, and all funds controlled locally? If approved by the voters, the existing half-cent sales tax would be extended until April 2036. So some safeguards, some accountability and transparency measures that we put into place last time will continue. One is that there will be a separate fund for Measure X, so that we can budget and track those funds discreetly. We will continue to have a Citizens Oversight Committee. The Citizens Oversight Committee is responsible for review and comment on the finance report, spending plan, and annual audit preparation of an annual report regarding compliance with the spending plan. The spending plan, the city's manager's office prepares an annual spending plan, informed by council direction and community input, for review and recommendation by the Citizens Oversight Committee. Lastly, we have an annual independent audit, which is a review of the collection and expenditure of the tax revenue, and it's included in our annual audit by our city's independent auditors. I'll also mention that at its meeting on April 30, the Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee found that funds from the one-half cent sales tax have been expended on improved infrastructure and improved public safety services, consistent with the
infrastructure and improved public safety services, consistent with the intent of the measure. Again, we're very proud of the high level of transparency and accountability that goes along with this funding. So that wraps up my presentation. Staff, as I said, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution, calling for the election to extend, but not raise, the one-half cent general transactions and use tax, known currently as Measure X.
Did have a question that wasn't, that you didn't address. Will the ballot measure, the description be somewhat similar to what was there the first time it went on?
Yes.
Okay, so youth, expanding youth programs that happened under this one will be on that as well, under public safety?
Well, this is a general, yes, I would consider that a public safety crime prevention tactic. This is a general sales tax. City council can direct us to use this on any funds. We gave examples, we're, you know, these are the things that are, were priorities to the community based on the feedback and the polling, but the direct answer to your question is yes.
Yeah, it was in the measure last time with respect to youth programs, I just want to make sure it's going to be on there again.
It is, I would have to look and see, and I'm looking to see if, do you have it, John?
I have it in front of me, I don't, do you want me to read it to you? You're asking about the ballot question presented to the voters, correct?
Well, I heard, I heard the ballot question, but in the description in the, of Measure X, it included, under public safety, youth programs, after-school programs. So I did not hear that this time around. That was very clear, the first time it went on the ballot, it was very clear that that was included. I don't hear it as clearly this time.
I have the question from 2018, it wasn't included in that. It's, as Mr. Gosman said, it's a general city, general tax available for any general purposes, I'm not sure what you're referring to where it was. I think there was a spending priority plan or something to that effect that was concurrently approved by the city council, and perhaps that's where that was.
Yes, that, plus it was, there were the arguments, you know, the actual description of the ballot measure.
Oh, the arguments in favor of the measure, is that, that's what you're referring to?
Well, there's also-
I think there was a description-
Or the impartial analysis?
I think, I think the city, city attorney's-
Impartial analysis?
Impartial, yeah, and then it was in there.
Okay, well, if I put that in there before, I'll put it in again.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Again, though, it is important, I want to drive this point home, this is a, this is a general tax, there is no, there's nothing that we put in here that's going to limit or specify where that money is specifically going to go, it is up to council.
I just wanted to make sure that it's like it was before.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a general item, so you would have had to sign up to speak. We have 23 people who have signed up, so that means we're going to be down to two minutes each. While you wait for your name to be called, please try to get your speeches down to two minutes, all right?
And also, as you see your name pop up on the screen, we have two available podiums, so please make your way to the next available podium as well.
All right, we're going to start with David O., followed by Colleen O'Hara, followed by Charles Bowen.
Hello, council, my name is David Ontveros, I am a community member here in Oceanside, grew up here, born and raised. I do support Measure X, and I love the idea of Measure X. I would like to see a little bit more language that kind of allows for the community voice to come through in Measure X. One of the big things that, looking at the November 2023 feasibility study, it did talk about Measure X being feasible if there are three things, one being kept affordable, which it is, the other one that it's going to be focused on community, community identified priorities, and then the other one that has robust community outreach engagement and communications. There are two things that I do want to kind of talk about in terms of community engagement, changing the ballot language to actually include community input, community engagement, and then focused on community identified projects, that would be great to have there on the ballot language, and then adding an actual provision to the 34.6.16 section in our city code, that would create a little bit more avenues for community engagement and community input. One for accountability and standards, Measure X, I think, is a blank check that is able to be spent however, and I think that there needs to be some reining in on that. I think what, what mayor you were talking about was the responsible spending pledge, that does give examples and kind of areas of what Measure X can fund, however, there is not anything that is any, like, it's not legal, it's not binding, it's not written in our code, and so codifying that would be a great kind of start to that. And then adding provisions for 34.16, or 34.6.16, like, the Division D would be to update the COC's purpose and their rules to make sure that community input is brought into it. It's great that we're having that on the city website, but it would be great to have an avenue of community input.
Thank you very much. Colleen?
My name, my name is Colleen O'Hara, and I serve as the chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure X. Excuse me, I have something in my throat. We are a group of seven individuals appointed by the council, with representatives from police, fire, the business community, the taxpayers' association, and we have three members at large. Our role is to review all the projects that are being proposed to the city council for use of Measure X funds. Without exception, every project that we have reviewed has met with the wishes of the voters of this city. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. Measure X has been a story of caring about your own community. Six years ago, you allowed us to go to the polls and say, "We love Oceanside, and we want Oceanside to be better." We said we wanted improved public safety. I'm so pleased to be the fire staff here tonight, the paramedics, they are the ones that are out there 24/7, along with our police officers, keeping us safe. They now have better equipment, and they have more personnel to accomplish that, and we have been the beneficiary of that. We supported infrastructure, with a brand-new fire station for you guys, more roads paved, we've addressed the homeless situation, and I encourage you to put this back on the ballot so we can say we love Oceanside again.
Thank you very much. Charles Bowen, followed by Jett Fennell.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Charles Bowen, Chair of the Communications Committee for Save Oceanside Sand. Tonight, I'd like to thank our city manager and his staff for changing their perspective and pivoting towards the treatment of our beaches and shoreline habitat as vital infrastructure that requires maintenance and capital improvement plan reserves. It follows that the language on the proposed ballot measure will include quote-unquote "beach and habitat restoration." Thank you for the specificity of these terms. I strongly encourage our city council to approve this resolution. I'd like to point out that the survey conducted by the city to gauge voter support for extending what's referred to as Measure X mirrored the results of SOS's recent independent voter survey. Oceanside's voters strongly support beach and habitat restoration to ensure a usable beach and shoreline resilience for this and future generations. Lastly, there are many valid and important uses of Measure X-type funding for city projects and expenditures that staff will be budgeting for with citizen oversight. One thing the city voter survey clearly showed was that without calling voter attention to it, voters tended to overlook the importance of beach and habitat restoration for our city. Nevertheless, when the same voters were specifically asked if they support budgeting money for replacing sand that is lost due to erosion and removing trash and pollution from our waterways, their support for doing so is strong. The specific wording of the proposed ballot measure will help ensure that our city's voters get what they support, restored beach and habitat. Please approve this resolution, and thank you for your time and consideration of this.
Thank you very much. Jett Fennell?
Yeah, all right, well, Charles actually led me into exactly what I wanted to talk about, so hello, everybody. I am interested in observing the language in the Measure X Responsible Spending Pledge. So the areas in which Measure X goes, public safety, capital improvement, permanent police headquarters, parks and recreation, oh wait, no, 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 sorry, let me start over. Public safety, capital improvement projects, and city services and programs, three that are listed in the Responsible Spending Pledge. Under public safety, we have some number of bullet points, all fairly vague. There's about nine, if I'm counting correctly, and under city services and programs, there are about five, also incredibly vague and broad, not specific at all. Whereas in capital improvement projects, we have language such as parks and recreation facilities is one that we're going to focus on. What that actually is, shade structures, repairs to Heritage Park, remodel junior so community centers, so on and so forth, there's very specific intention for what these funds are going to be used for in these different areas under capital improvement projects. However, when it comes to public safety, and when it comes to city services and programs, there's like, public safety is enhanced police services, including crime, crime prevention and drug enforcement. City services and programs, there's senior and youth programs. There's not any specificity about what that looks like, how it's going to happen, and what it's going to accomplish, and so my echo of Charles is get specific about it so that the people can know what they're voting for, they can know what they're being asked to consider.
Thank you very much. Richard Newton, followed by Patty K., followed by Anthony Walker.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. Any increase in taxes increases government bureaucracy and administration, which burdened citizens not only through increased taxes, but through loss of freedoms as well. Public safety should be the first priority of municipal governments. Like most taxes, the threat of public safety funding cuts are used by bureaucrats to scare taxpayers into paying yet more money in taxes. I say this as a former firefighter who saw this for 31 years. To be clear, I was not with the city of Oceanside, but the pattern is the same by politicians everywhere. I have lived in Oceanside for 34 years. Life was fine and safe before Proposition X was passed. Discontinuing this tax will not lead to a catastrophe, indeed, citizens will not even notice a loss of services. Government cannot grow indefinitely, at some point it needs to stop and be curtailed. Between federal, state, county, and excise taxes, we are taxed enough. There are many superfluous activities in government. If politicians cut public safety to punish voters, then that is on those politicians, shame on them. If public safety is your priority, then make it the priority in any budget, that's on all of you. We see that Prop X funding is simply a general tax, as admitted to tonight, we also see that Prop X sales pitch originally was a lie. Please respect the citizens of Oceanside, stop burdening them with excessive taxation. Do your part as our elected representatives to protect our interests and reduce our tax burdens. Give us our money back and our freedom as well in one fell swoop, it's a win-win. Please do not attempt to extend the Prop X taxation, but let it expire instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty K., followed by Anthony Walker.
I feel a little outnumbered, guys, because I think I know which slide you're on, but anyway. Measure X, a temporary tax for seven, I don't think so. It was sold as seven years temporary, and this initiative is extended out 10 more, which is a total of 17 years. I don't consider that temporary at all. It was sold as a safety, but now you're having other groups ask for that, some of that pot of money. If the tax money was to end this next year, where is the plans in the city budget for future needs, now that you're saying that you have more needs to come? The professional advice that said it was temporary was not very reliable, was it? If they knew that it would extend beyond the seven years in their budget. The pot of money that was sold for safety has everybody, as shown in last meeting, the arts, the beaches, et cetera, asking for some out of that pot of money that you're saying now is general. The yearly revenue often matched or exceeded the expenses it was used for, therefore, the more money you have, the more money that was spent, why wasn't it rolled over and preserved if it was going to expire? Measure X covers, nearly covers, the unfunded pension liability. I'm not a budget expert, but evidently those who sat before you on staff and council weren't either, as they awarded these contracts that the citizens way down the future have to pay for. If you put this measure on the ballot, you will be passing the buck to the citizens who are too busy to pay attention. If you put it on, please, limit the number of years to at least four years, because 10 years is way too much when you're getting all this extra revenue in, then reconsider it at that point, but your budgeting should go along knowing that it's going to expire.
Thank you. Anthony Walker, followed by Chris Wilson, followed by Todd Holmes.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Anthony Walker. I'm a proud resident employee of this beautiful city of Oceanside. I come before you with a request tonight for your support for Measure X. I believe that it is our responsibility to ensure that future generations are given the same, if not better, opportunities than we had, and to achieve that, we need to invest in the very foundation of our city, its infrastructure, its amenities, and its resources. The extension of Measure X will allow us to make necessary improvements and investments to secure a brighter future for our community. This measure will not only enhance the quality of life for our residents, but will also attract new business, create jobs, and bolster our local economy. It is an investment that will benefit each and every one of us, both now and in the years to come. I implore you to consider the long-term benefits that this measure will bring. This is not a tax hike, it is an extension of a sales tax on nonessential items that has been in place since 2019. Majority of money generated from this half-cent sales tax is paid for by non-residents, tourism, and businesses. Together, let us ensure we maintain a safe and strong Oceanside, provide services that meet the needs of our community. Let us be the catalyst for positive change. I urge you to support this tax measure and allow the citizens of our city to decide the fate of our shared future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Chris Wilson, followed by Todd Holmes, followed by Derek.
Good evening, my name's Chris Wilson, I live at 709 Mosaic Circle. I am a resident of this community, as well as my family. I have firsthand experience in how Measure X has improved our quality of life and made life better here in Oceanside, with response times from all of our public safety to improved equipment for public safety, as well as just in my neighborhood, we had road improvements, we got new streets, as well as speed bumps put in along my street, which is very busy by Alamosa Elementary, which both of my kids attend, so now we have better streets for them to play in, speed bumps to stop people from obviously accessing speed, and it's made safer Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Holmes, followed by Derek, followed by Matthew Clark.
Todd Holmes isn't here, so, hello, my name's Derek Mitri, I'm a resident in Oceanside. I'm here in support of Measure X. Measure X has helped repair our streets and roads, along with public safety and infrastructure. I live in an older neighborhood with sidewalks that have been torn up by old trees. The sidewalks have been repaired, so my little girls can safely ride their bikes up and down the streets without falling. Measure X has improved our beachfront here and parks. We have brand-new bathrooms, bringing in revenue for the city, as well as making it clean and safe for a place for our families. I am proud to live in Oceanside, and I appreciate all the things the city and residents have done to make our home a beautiful place. We love our city, and we love our community. Please vote yes on Measure X.
Thank you. Matthew Clark, followed by Lemmy?
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and City Council Members, my name is Matthew Clark, and I live in the Loma Alta neighborhood. I wanted to commend the city council and city staff on their implementation of Measure X. The citizen oversight committee and third-party audits have been a welcome change in expenditures in the city. You have been transparent with how you've spent this money, and have been held accountable by the citizens. I won't take any more of your time, but as a resident of this city, you've received my full support in passing this measure- full support in passing this measure to the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Yemi. Yemi?
Hi, everyone. My name is Yemi, and I live and work in Oceanside. I'm here to support a Measure X renewal, but with the strong recommendation that the measure's spending allocations and management processes are improved upon with this renewal. At the last city council meeting and tonight's meeting, we had many great community members bring to you their suggestions. I'd like to echo their efforts and also want to emphasize the importance of our city council's collaboration in advocating for our spending plans that reflect our diverse community needs of public safety and infrastructure. I hope our city council can collaborate with us as we advocate for expanding avenues of community input, community engagement, and civic education, and I hope our city council can remain flexible as our public safety and infrastructure needs change. Based on research and our lived experiences, we have found that including programming and services for our houseless neighbors, our youth, and the arts is essential to improving our public safety and infrastructure. Lastly, I hope the city council can revisit the citizen oversight committee's bylaws. Currently, the COC cannot make recommendations for spending allocations, nor does it meet consistently. If it does renew and with more community input as we go, it is crucial that the city's levels of accountability and standards of evaluation are significantly raised. I also invite members of the community to share their input on what they would like to see in their community. We want to make sure our neighbors' voices are heard, and it is my hope that through regardless, through or regardless or in spite of Measure X, our collective livelihood and well-being improves, and that our city takes positive and intentional steps to address our community's suggestions to fairly and sustainably allocate funds. I strongly believe we can do that if we address improvements collaboratively, and inclusive of us all, regardless of where we come from. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jimmy Naught, followed by Amber Kaye Nietoa.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127 Sherry Lane. Over the past few years, I've listened to the public, calls, emails, et cetera, et cetera. And the biggest complaint that I've had about Measure X is there needs to be more response to district needs now that we are a district-run city. And the question is, how do we determine those specific designations and determination? Who are the best people to determine who and how and what to do and how to divide? After much contemplation, I think that what we need to do is to set aside a certain percentage of the X funds to each of the district representatives, and let them be responsive, each of them, to their constituents. And if they aren't, they'll pay the price. And they could set up district focus groups to help them along. They could do a lot of things. It's a good system. I would encourage you to consider that, because more and more, the district needs of the individuals within each district needs to be heard.
Thank you. Amber Kaye Nietoa, followed by Steve Masu, followed by Miles Sweeney.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council members. I am in support of Measure X, but echoing what the community is saying here tonight. There is and must be, especially with a 10-year extension, more intention put on what the community's needs are from a community perspective. I really like what you put in there, Jimmy, about district-slush funds, for lash of a better word, for representatives to really address community needs right with community members, because that is important for community members to have say-so. While we meet the general, larger needs that are needed as well with the whole city in terms of fire and public safety, we would not be, and maybe the numbers of satisfaction would not be as high as they are right now if they weren't for Measure X and the funds that went towards fire and AMT safety, because that improved after my discussion with Chief Parsons. I know how much that improved our fire response times down. And also, they are doing a great job in recruiting within the community, and that's another thing that we could use this funding for in terms of youth programming, is to set up mentorship and internship programs within public safety, within the city, within Parks and Rec, within these spaces, so that people who move into these jobs are from the community, represent the community, and have the community's best interests at heart. We are the third-largest city in San Diego County, but as the report by staff was given, we are taxed a little bit lower, so we have the capacity to continue Measure X and be responsible with it for our community members. Again, the things that we should focus on are youth programs, mentorship and internships. Art is infrastructure, is a really important thing. Communities benefit from that, and in all districts, having something that represents those communities and making it accessible for not just the tourists, but for the community members as a whole. And also, I want to know, age-friendly parks, right? Parks aren't just for children. Making it accessible for our seniors and people of all ages, so that we remain a community that's friendly multigenerationally. And also, thank you to Yemi and David for reaching out to the community the way they did.
Steve Masu, followed by Miles Sweeney, and Beth Barnum.
Hi. I'd like to thank Michael Gosman for adding those magic words, beach and habitat restoration in the Measure X extension ballot statement. That'll help make sales tax available to situations where we have a scoop permit to do something, we have sand to put it there, but we can't get the money to transport it to the beach. We'd really in favor of that. So I asked the City Council to please approve the measure as written, and I encourage all Oceanside residents who are here and watching this to vote for it when it comes on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles Sweeney, followed by Beth Barnum, followed by Beatrice Palmer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. My name is Miles Sweeney. I live in the Rancho Del Oro neighborhood, and I rise in support. To see Measure X placed back on the ballot, supported it the first time. Years ago, I was in this council chamber trying to stop a fire engine from being shut down, down the street from me, and luckily, the city council did support that and kept that, that fire engine in service. Measure X, it was a great presentation tonight, the citizens' oversight, all the transparency. It's great, because like a few of my fellow citizens, I don't like being overtaxed, clearly. I don't think anybody in this room does, but we like to see a return on investment. And you don't really need the citizens', well, you need all that, but I'm saying, as a resident, driving around, seeing what's being built, seeing where the money's going, seeing the new facilities, I can see it with my own eyes, and it's all, it's all attached, right? We, we're building, the density is increasing, our response times are going up for our public, excuse me, the call volume's going up for, for police and fire, so we need to continue to support that. You fix the roads, you get better response times. It all, it's all, it all comes together. And also, I'm fully in support of the beaches, too, as a surfer and a resident of Oceanside. I love that that's included as well. But thank you, and thank you for the support. Hope to see it on the ballot in November.
Thank you. Beth Barnum, followed by Beatrice Palmer, followed by Ryan Jones.
Good evening, Beth Barnum. I'm actually in opposition of this, and I was born and raised here, and I love Oceanside. And yes, great things have come out of Oceanside, and I'm, I back the blue, and I love the Fire Department. My issue is managing money. This goes back, it's been said before, this was supposed to be a temporary tax. You knew it was coming up to extinction in 2026. Why weren't you planning for that? Households planned for that. We're getting taxed at the pump. Sand Egg is trying to pass a mileage tax. Who can afford this? And yes, there's an oversight committee, but I say tighten the budget. And if you pass it, I have a feeling it's going to go to the ballot. I have never voted for anything. My dad always taught me, don't vote for new taxes, because it's usually not spent appropriately. I appreciate that there's an oversight committee. I have not looked at that. I will dive into it further. I have seen what's going on in other cities with extra taxes, and it's not exactly going, because I have, I drive college every day, and it's like whack-a-mole, trying to avoid the potholes. So I would love to see major arteries fixed. I don't see that. I live near John Landis Park. It's been reopened. That's a huge plus. But Buccaneer still has lots of rocks. We don't have as much sand, so I'm not sure where the money is going in that essence. If you're going to put it on the ballot, I would suggest changing it from 10 years, because again, that's not a temporary tax, to maybe four years and look at it again. And next time, have that slush money ready to go, so that if it doesn't passes, doesn't pa, excuse me, doesn't pass, then you don't have to bring this up again. We are taxed to the hilt here in California. I want to go by...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beatrice Palmer, followed by Ryan Jones, followed by Pat.
Hi. Buenas noches. Good evening. I'm Beatrice Palmer, or B. Palmer. I live in Oceanside. I've lived in Oceanside since 1974, and I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the council and the staff for prioritizing the needs of the community through Measure X. I'm in support of this, and the, you know, there's so much that was said, and the one thing I just want to echo are the residents of Oceanside who brought up the ask to continue to prioritize the needs of historically underserved families through this measure for things like the arts. I want to support also that we consider giving some of these opportunities to local organizations that are directly serving Black and Brown and queer families in our community with things like art. Art programs can significantly impact historically underserved youth and adults. It can reduce recidivism and alleviate the many symptoms of poverty in various ways. Supporting Measure X with programs that support our youth are, help them with emotional expression and healing, also help them to develop creativity, self-confidence, and self-development. It boosts their self-esteem, self-esteem, and creates bridges among cultures and races and people of different values, and it creates engagement and motivation amongst our cities to create agents of change for our communities. So thank you for all that you do for supporting our firefighters and fixing our streets, but let's continue to invest in our underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ryan Jones, followed by Pat, followed by Macy. Ryan Jones? Ryan Jones is not here?
Yeah, he left.
Okay. So you're Pat?
Yes. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I support Measure X being put on the ballot. I support our police and fire department. I appreciate their service. I also think there could be more specific language added to the measure to allow for community input, to identify community priorities. There are many ways to increase public safety. After-school programs, it keeps the kids out of gangs, arts programs that could benefit local organizations, more money for the unhoused. Depending on the district, more funds for environmental issues, like for wildlife. Basically, just more specific language to 34 dot six dot 16, so that the community that actually pays the task, actually pays the tax, has some input on how it's spent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Macy, followed by Pat Coffield.
I'm really confused at why this is actually contentious. I complain about the economy all the time, but half a cent, come on, let's be serious. Yeah, so I'm just in support of this, and like everyone else has said, art is a form of infrastructure. We all voted on those cute murals. They're awesome. We should be investing in that, and John Landis is a great space for community. I've been there, as you know. And yeah, firefighters are awesome. They'll put out anyone's fire, regardless of who you are, where you live. It's a great system. So yeah, please, this isn't complicated. Please put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Macy. Matt Coffield, followed by Ryem.
Good evening. Save Oceanside Sam supports the staff recommendation the City Council adopt the resolution calling for the extension of Measure X. All of the proposed city services, including included in Measure X are important. So is beach and habitat restoration. An SOS survey leaves no doubt as to the preferences and high priority placed on beach restoration by Oceanside residents. It augurs well for passage of Measure X in November. Our compliments to the staff for including it. I would add that the spending plan should earmark the line item, beach and habitat restoration, exclusively for restoration of all of Oceanside's shoreline, with priority to areas not covered in ReBeach and the annual harbor dredge. ReBeach places, ReBeach places Oceanside as a leader, the leader, of innovative retention solutions for beach erosion in the state and perhaps the nation. We are proud of you and our city. We should keep in mind, however, that ReBeach pilot covers only a small part of the shoreline and occurs in the out here. In the interim, our beaches south of Wisconsin deteriorate daily to the degree that there are no safe beaches south of Wisconsin, or in fact, south of Tyson. We need to look no further, no farther than this year's successful replenishment project in Solana Beach, Del Mar, and San Clemente to learn a lot about the efficacy of real-time sand, standalone...
Thank you very much.
Sand replenishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Please shut that off. All right. Last person is Ryem.
Hi, yes. Good evening, Council. I was here to support the Measure X that is before you and putting it on the ballot. But I did want to highlight what some of the community members have highlighted, and that's about making sure these funds go towards investing in our public, and that includes our underserved communities. And I noticed that the survey about what changes to improve our city that was shown earlier showed high priority for affordable housing and fixing infrastructure and things like that. So I think that should be very, paid very close attention to, and I noticed that funding for providing more police presence was actually very low on the list. So I know around the country, bloated police budgets actually unfortunately take away from a lot of issue, funding causes that can keep the community safe and also off the streets, you know, affordable housing, funds towards schools, fund towards community programs and things like that. So I hope that that's taken into account. And I just wanted to add, you know, we have a lot of these debates in local cities about sales tax and, you know, how to fund the things that keep our cities running, but on a large scale, you know, we also need federal funding for, to fix our issues like affordable housing and getting public transit and actually acting on climate change, so we all have a beach to actually go to. You know, unfortunately, right now, it's spent on a lot of other issues, including sending billions of dollars to Israel to commit genocide and foreign, foreign aid that actually is not really needed, that could be spent rather than committing genocide, for example. It'd be spent here at home and helping improve Americans' lives. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. That concludes the speakers. Anything else the staff wants to add before we discuss, start? Because you want to make it clear that this is a general tax. It's not a specific tax. Specific tax would require a higher vote, voter requirement?
That is, that is true, and I do want to make that point, but I also do want to address a couple of the concerns that you'd had and others. With the existing general sales tax, we do have a Responsible Spending Pledge that kind of lays out that framework that helps inform the spending plans. Our, our plan would be that should this measure be approved in November, we would take that time to refresh, update, bring back that spending pledge to the council for their input and approval that would further guide future spending plans. So that's the opportunity for, you know, people made mention, and it's true, that priorities of the community change over time, and we should take a fresh look at that spending pledge, and we fully plan to should the sales tax be extended.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments by staff? Nope. Okay. To the council, Councilmember Robinson. To the council, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just very happy to make a move that the adoption of the resolution to put this on the ballot. I wanted to do that before I make a couple of comments. You hit the general versus specific tax thing that I want to talk about. And I agree with a lot of people about taxes, about state taxes, federal taxes. You know, the state on January 1, there's going to be an 11% excise tax on firearms and ammunition. Now, you might like it, but guess what? I didn't get to vote on it. The state just did it. The difference with this is we're putting it out there on the ballot for the state or for our, our local citizens to vote on. And that's what I think is the difference. And then if they pass it, the money, we've proven it time and time again through all the reviews that it is used the way the public directs it to be used. And somebody commented that, oh, if it went away, you wouldn't notice a difference in your public service, in your emergency services. And that may be true, but it wouldn't be without a lot of work by these individuals that are lining the wall and people that aren't here tonight. I don't say this very often, but I'm going to go fast because time's going. But many of you know I was the fire chief prior to getting on council, so for six years. When I came here, I spent 36 years in fire service coming here, most of that in Orange County. I got here and one of the things I was the new fire chief, when I went and inspected things is that these individuals were working in buildings and fire, fire stations that were really falling apart around them. Their fire apparatus, we never knew if, when it was going to break down or how often it was going to be in the shop. There was equipment that was needed that we didn't have. And because of their efforts, you didn't notice it. They still showed up at fires. They still showed up at your medical aids, but their quality of life, their work-life balance wasn't good. We were losing firefighters every year. They would go to the place that I came from, to Orange County. They'd go to San Diego City. Some would go locally to Carlsbad, to other departments. Thanks to Measure X, a lot of that has stopped. I think if you were to talk to these firefighters here tonight, they would tell you their work quality of life is better, things they're able to spend more time with family, they're not, because when you lose firefighters and they're not, because they go to their departments, you have to fill those gaps and they have to do it with overtime. So these men and women are working extra to do that. That's why you don't notice the difference because of the effort they put in. What didn't get mentioned in the ballot initiative, I know the wording, we're very, we're limited in the number of words, but we didn't mention our lifeguards. And one of the things Measure X has done is it allows us, it has allowed us to improve our lifeguarding service at the beach. We have more professional full-time guards there every day. We have better equipment. They're now using new technologies to help save lives and respond to people going in the ocean. And that's, again, things you don't see because before that, they were working harder and impacting their lives deeper to provide the services that we just kind of take for granted. I, I think hopefully we'll have more public participation at the Citizens Oversight Committee. I go to those meetings, I sit and like a lot of things, we don't get the public input that we should. And hopefully we will get that input and people will let the Oversight Committee know about projects they want. You can always write to your council members and let us know about things. We hear you tonight on a lot of things. Some things will probably get done, some things won't. And I'm hoping in, at the end of this 10 years, maybe we'll have another with our improved TOT, with other taxes, then maybe Measure X, that, that extended sales tax won't be needed anymore. I don't know. But right now, we have a lot of catch-up to do. And, and it's nobody's fault. It's just the way things were. There was enough money to go around to keep our infrastructure up to date. And now if you look at, we got a new fire station one going in. We've got improvements at other fire stations. Talk, talk to these individuals here that are lining the wall. They'll tell you what's really happened with the Measure X money. So I'm just glad to move this forward and thank you.
Thank you, and I will second the motion.
Mayor, can I clarify that that motion included the introduction of the ordinance? You've mentioned the reso, but we have.
Not the resolution, introduce the ordinance.
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't you hear it?
I did now.
All right. Councilmember Joyce.
I just had some brief comments. First of all, thanks everybody for hanging in. It's been a long one. Appreciate you guys. You guys were standing the whole time.
Good knees.
So Measure X is a crucial source of income. It's, it's what we need to maintain the high level service that our police, our fire and our lifeguard professionals provide currently. I actually think it is critical because maybe we wouldn't see drops in our ability to provide service immediately, but there are definitely, again, the accrual of underinvestment over the years to come that would, that would have an impact on both the folks who work in those professions and the folks who rely on them every day. I also believe that we, we can do a better job of being proactive on our public safety spending as we've seen and we've begun to do with transformative youth programming. And we recently started to add traffic calming around our, our schools and parks, which is critical. This all came from Measure X. Further, Measure X can be the source of funding that could enable us to lead a currently feeble response in North County cities to the moral calamity that is homelessness. The results of the survey show that this is actually our common cause. It's on the top of voters' minds when you ask them, what can we do to improve? That's what they say. If 361 Oceansiders lost their home to a wildfire today, we would launch into a full-time campaign to get them shelter, keep them safe, and we would be right to do that. But that's precisely the situation that 361 seniors, young adults, and yeah, even children are facing on our streets today. Our action is different because we've created these structures of blame in our institutions and our minds, but I believe that we can move beyond the stalemate of this situation. But we can't do that without funding. And Measure X is critical to that change. So that's the other reason I will be voting in support of this extension tonight. And thanks again for being here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. The city collects development impact fees from new development to build new parks, roads, city buildings. And the impact fees have to be in proportion to the impacts those developments create. And in just rough numbers, it's about 30% of building all those new parks, city buildings and roads. And yet, over the last 30 years, the city has, with the exception of some grant money, used development impact fees 100% to build new parks, roads and city buildings. When we did our budget workshop, the city engineer stood up here and it was an interesting comment that the revenue, revenues from development impact fees are slowly starting to drop. So it is incumbent on the city to find other sources of money to build, whether it's Park Site One, whether it's to build new roads, whether it's to build new city buildings, whether it's a fire station, police station, whatever the case may be. Measure X provides the opportunity for those types of infrastructure improvements to occur because at some point, there is not going to be enough development impact fee money to build all those community needs that the city wants. We received a draft some months ago of an update to the city's park fees. And the total need and the number is about $140 million in need. The increase in park fees to charge new developers was about $15 million. And my question when I had my little briefing is where is the rest of the money coming from? So if we want a new gymnasium, where's it coming from? Because it's not going to come from development impact fees. So my hope would be that if this gets on the ballot, our focus should be not just on maintaining what we have, but making sure that the community's needs for new things gets met, whether it's a new park, whether it's new city buildings, whether it's new roads. I'm glad to see in the staff report that currently we are at about 19% of the revenues go to personnel costs. My issue was capping it at some number. I was looking at 25% so that we cannot grow the number of people, that the money goes to build specific things. So I will be supporting, putting it on the ballot.
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. First, I, I want to first address the park fees. Park fees haven't been increased in umpteen number of years. Is it 20, 30? I don't remember. I don't understand why it's not been to the council yet. I keep asking about that, but just, just to address that one side issue. I am 100% supportive of extending Measure X. I think about $20 million. Where would we cut $20 million? And I do feel that we would feel it. I do feel that every day we would know because we would feel it. I do believe that response times would be impacted. I do think that we will be cutting libraries and recreation, parks and recreation, the first to, the kind of quality of life things that we are able to offer to the community would be the first to cut. I think about all the cities that are having a hard time right now, even balancing a budget. It's against the law to not pass a budget that is balanced. You can't say you're going to spend more money than you really know that you're going to have. So what I started off by doing a couple of years ago is really pushing on some of the language that was in there about public safety and addressing potential crime through after school programming. And I feel that the city ended up doing that. It took a while. I think with this new direction that I'm hearing from staff, we'll be on it. I do feel that there has been an increase in support of Measure X because it's gotten to certain communities. I mean, not just traffic calming, which I think we need more of, and certainly this will, this will be very, very helpful, but that it got to places where you can actually see it. Someone said John Landis, we were finally able to open, that reopen after we closed it during the Great Recession and with just this partnership with the library and Public Works and Parks and Rec. It was just a beautiful, beautiful thing that we were able to see. So I have heard all your comments. Please understand this is not a specific tax. You can't be specific. I heard some of the comments say, well, I want you to be more specific. We can't. We can't. What we've done, and obviously for me, public safety is number one because that is what people expect. They expect to call, if you call 911, there's going to be a response. And, and after that, we have so many infrastructure issues in the city. We've got the pier, the concrete part of the pier, not, not, not the, the fire. That, that's going to be funded through the insurance, but the concrete part is going to be about $47 million. There are some grants that require some kind of a match, so we do need to have that kind of funding. Police, a new police department. We're getting closer to having a decision design possibly at the COC. So I, I think we're finally getting close to that and it's going to, again, you know, I mean, besides going, working with our congressman and all the other things that we need to do to try to find that money, it's going to require some level of, of matching funds. So we do have infrastructure needs for a growing community. And, and I want to say also, want to include that all those waivers that you see on these new projects that are mandated by the state and we can't say no to. Well, if they don't have to do that, some of that stuff like landscaping, undergrounding of utilities, then guess who's going to have to look at that and see how we can improve our communities. So I think together as, as we see each other here, I, I think there were a couple of folks who, I think more on a philosophical reason, you know, we've got a couple of folks who, you know, will probably be voting no. I think overwhelmingly, I think our community is working together. And very, and in a way that is improving our citizenship, our, basically our citizens coming to council and being really participating. I would like to have more commissions so that we can have more of that participation and more of those volunteers going out. That's a separate story there. But I am very, very encouraged by the poll. I am very, very encouraged that some of our firefighters actually spoke tonight saying, yes, we need this. Yes, I live in Oceanside. You don't know how, you know, it used to be that you couldn't afford it here, right? So firefighters generally would not be able to live in Oceanside. And I'm just so, really feel really good about our firefighters not having to drive so far to get to work and are actually enjoying Oceanside and enjoying their family when they're finally not at the fire station. So thank you so much, everyone, for speaking. I have no other lights. This does require a four out of five, so let's vote.
Mayor, can I introduce the ordinance really quick?
Yes.
Sorry. So you have your election resolution as part of the motion, but we also need to introduce the ordinance. So this is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 34, Article 2, Sections 34.6.5 and 34.6.16 subdivision B of the Oceanside City Code, extending the temporary one-half cent general transactions and use tax for an additional 10 years while maintaining provisions for citizens oversight and accountability. And of course, this is subject to voter approval.
Of course. This is to get it on the ballot and hopefully we'll all kumbaya and get, let people know that we want them to vote yes. Okay. And this is in the, in the form of a yes or no, and we want people to vote yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
I got you to say it.
Yes.
Please vote.
Go ahead and vote.
Five of.
Five of. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. So listen, we've, we've had a request for a break, so how about five of? Five of nine. I'm going to go get, go ahead and get started.
Thank you, there.
Thank you very much. We're now on item 33, which is very, very important to our community of Oceanside. This is adoption of a resolution to authorize the expenditure of home ARP, low, moderate income housing asset and inclusionary housing in lieu fee funds in fulfillment of the 2024 Notice of Funding Availability, that's called a NOFA, approve the conditional award of funding in the form of a residual receipts loan, commonly called GAAP funding, in the amount of $4.25 million, excuse me, $4.2, $4.3 million and 43 federal project-based housing vouchers and 12 veteran affairs supportive housing vouchers for the development and operation of a 56-unit affordable senior housing community at 1111 to 1123 South Coast Highway. And $6 million and 50 project-based housing vouchers for the, for the development and operation of a 111-unit affordable housing community at 2136 South El Camino Real. In addition, authorize for the authorization for the city manager or their designee to execute loan funding commitment, award letters and all loan and related documents upon satisfaction of the general terms and conditions set forth in the NOFA and the award letter and appropriation of funds therefore. That's a mouthful, but I think that really does explain why we're here. We're here because we have in lieu funds in about $12 million. And what we're here is for approval of two projects to receive funding. And tonight we have Leilani Hines, Housing and Neighborhood Services Director, to explain to us. to us the process and the awards.
Thank you, Mayor, for reading all of that. Welcome, members of the public, Madam Mayor, council members. As the mayor stated, we are here to talk about the 2024 Notice of Funding Availability that was made available. That Notice of Funding Availability was published in early February. It is for the acquisition, rehabilitation, or new development of a 100% affordable rental housing project. This was at the direction of the city council at their August 31 workshop to put out an RFP to produce more affordable housing. And so we put forward $6 million in our available housing funds for this purpose, approximately 50 project-based vouchers, and then 30 HUD-VAS TPVs. It was anticipated at that time that really this amount of money would be able to assist with one development project. We emphasized that the workshop was on the new production of housing, and so that is the priority for the NOFA. It closed in March 2020, in March 22nd. And as a result, here's $18 million. That's our total piggy bank and savings for housing dollars. The bulk of it comes from our inclusionary housing in lieu fee fund, where developers do not produce housing on-site, they do pay an in lieu fee. We are an entitlement jurisdiction with HUD and receive home funding. During COVID, there was additional money made available to us, home ARP dollars and approximately $2 million. That is very specific to serving homeless or at risk of homelessness. And then our carryover or leftover money from former redevelopment, redevelopment project areas are low mod income housing asset fund. That is also a very targeted fund where it is priority to spend at least 30% of that money for 30% AMI or extremely low income. And then there are certain limitations on spending it for senior housing. So each one of these funding sources have very specific requirements on what it can fund and what it cannot. So we received a total of five applications amounting to $22.6 million in funding. So way above and beyond what our bank account has available to us. The estimated project cost for all five projects is over $341 million for 572 units. So the cost of doing affordable housing is very, very high in California. In reviewing the projects that were submitted, we did gather a panel of housing staff from various cities, from the City of Oceanside, Carlsbad, El Cajon, San Marcos, and Vista to review the applications, came up with some recommendations. The criteria and priorities that we really focused on was the project approach and concept, how it met the needs specifically of Oceanside, financial feasibility in the most expedited fashion as possible, the developer capacity. What we found is all five projects really met the criteria. So it really came down to which one really addressed Oceanside's needs in the best way possible. So with that, I originally stated that when we published this NOFA, we were really only looking for one project. Coast Villas on South Coast Highway rose to the top of the recommendations because one of the things that we've been trying to do is we opened a navigation center for our homeless population. They need a place to go once they graduate from that navigation center. And so having permanent supportive housing to house our homeless was something that we really prioritized. This project also prioritized seniors. We heard last night at our housing commission, a number of seniors that provided input about what they are facing. They're no longer in their earning years, and so their income is fixed. They need housing or are at risk of homelessness. So this is a project that did rise to the top. It also fits very nicely with that $2 million in the home ARP funding. They also received commitment from the San Diego County for their No Place Like Home program. Understanding that our need is great here in Oceanside and wanting to provide for diverse housing population groups, staff did recommend a second project. That project is a more family-based project. It has a different timeline than the Coast Villas project. And so we felt that by providing you with two recommendations or two projects that had varied timelines, varied population groups, that this would be the best path forward in trying to address the housing needs in a quick fashion. Even though we only recommended two projects, we're placing the others on a waiting list. So in case one of those projects does not get fulfilled or doesn't receive their financing, that we could move to the next one because, again, we think all of the projects that were submitted, they all address a lot of needs. Again, Coast Villas is our number one project for funding. Again, special needs groups, 100% seniors at 50% AMI or less, focusing on homeless seniors with disabilities, our veterans population, and that extremely low income category. An added bonus is that it does revitalize parcel of land on Coast Highway that's a used car sales lot right now. In terms of entitlement, the entitlement process will be relatively easy for this project in that it is supportive housing that is allowed by right under state law. It's an identified housing element site, although it's not a low-income site, it is identified as a moderate-income site, so we're getting better bang for our buck on that site. Construction would be slated to start in fall 2025 if they are successful in applying for the major financing next year. Again, another critical component is this project does fit nicely with the home ARP funds that we have available because of the homeless criteria. It has a commitment from the County of San Diego for No Place Like Home dollars, so from a financing standpoint, it's set to go. The second project is on South El Camino Real, brought to you by Merck Investments. Again, wanting to provide for diverse housing needs. This is a large family project, mixed income, anywhere from 30% to 80% AMI. Will have 30 units for supportive housing for persons with developmental disabilities. Lots of three bedrooms here, 55 units or 50% of the housing is three bedrooms, while 15% of our renter population, our large households, our large families, large households are paying more than 70% of their, 77% of them are cost burdened. There's not enough rental stock in the market for three-bedroom units, and so this is something that we do see as a great need within the community. Entitlement and construction, this is an identified low-income housing element site. They have already submitted for tax credits and bond financing in April. They expect to hear about whether or not they've been successful by August 8th in 2024. If they are, then construction will get underway pretty rapidly. What you have before you tonight is a conditional financing commitment, just saying that we're going to reserve these funds for our developers for the next 24-month period. And as a part of that conditional financing commitment, the loan terms would be, of course, that we have a deed of trust, promissory notes to secure that loan. The loan that they would enter into is a residual receipts loan or soft financing. You only pay when you're making a little bit of money after you've paid all your senior debt. Before a term of 55 years, 3% simple interest. Other conditions for the financing include that they actually have to receive their entitlement before they get their money, that they have to secure the major financing for the project, either tax credits or bond financing, and where there is a required environmental review that that is completed. On the project-based voucher side, there is a requirement for a federal environmental review or NIPA. There's a requirement for a subsidy layering review by the tax credit committee, and then we would execute an agreement to enter into a payment contract. So what conditional means is, is that we don't give them the money when they step out the door today if you approve the financing. It means that the money's just on hold, reserved for them. When they meet all the conditions, we will enter into loan documents and fund. That would all occur at the same time all their major financing has been secured and we're closing on all the entire project. So that may be next year, that may be in 24 months, but it is not once we take action today. So there is still time. I do want to acknowledge the housing commission members that are here today. This is a split recommendation in that staff is recommending two projects. However, the housing commission did divert. They are recommending three projects. The feeling there is that we've got the money now, the need is now, let's fund three projects now, don't wait for the future. Staff has, is taking a more conservative approach in that we feel that two projects, we set out for one, we're doing two. Every week, we get a knock on the door from different developers, property owners who are looking to do another affordable housing project. So in our minds, for staff, we wanted to reserve council's ability to look at different projects that may come in the future, whether it's a month from now or next year, that there might be another project, and so why blow all the money now? So it's an instance of, do we be conservative from a staff perspective or from the housing commission perspective? We have the need now, let's spend the money now. So with that, staff is recommending all those actions about authorizing the expenditure of the home ARP dollars, our low mod dollars, our in lieu fund, the funds to fund the two projects before you this evening, authorizing the city manager or their designee to enter into all those loan documents that are necessary to effectuate the transaction and then to appropriate the funds so that we are able to show and demonstrate a funding commitment to the projects that we've recommended before you. So that concludes staff's presentation. I do want to acknowledge that the developers that have submitted applications are all here and present this evening, and they'll be able to answer more project-specific questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. We have 21 speakers.
Correct.
Some may have already left. Right, Ms. Hines? Oh, you're going to sit down. It's okay. You're going to sit down. You can answer from there. Councilwoman Robinson has a question for you before we start with the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Ms. Hines, I just, I know it's in front of us, but, and it's not, I should have asked you, it's not in your presentation, but can you give us a couple of quick, off-the-cuff comments about the Olive Park project, just so people know what the housing commission did recommend?
Sure. So the housing commission did recommend a third project. That third project, because we had talked a lot about family projects, so Olive Park was a project that they did consider, staff did say, you know, the third project, I think that that is up to council's discretion as to which project that would be, but it does represent a project that meets the family needs. It's in a key location and site in terms of transit orientation. It has a little bit of a longer route than some of our other projects in that there is a discretionary review process for that, there's an environmental review process. So from staff's perspective, it's a little bit more risky. The other project for consideration is the Peer View Way project. We already have a project that is a permanent supportive housing project. This is one that also would do a balance of supportive housing for homeless here in the downtown corridor. It was entitled formerly as a market rate product that is now turned into a 100% affordable product. So that's already entitled. They are ready to go and to submit an application for tax credit financing in July of this year. So that entitlement process could be relatively quick and easy as well.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and start with Jody Rothry, followed by Juwan Lee, followed by Donna Gierman.
How many minutes?
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Juwan Lee. I would like to yield my time to Jody Rothry.
No, we don't do that. Sorry. Two minutes.
Mayor Sanchez, council members, Director Hines, and members of the public. My name is Jody Rothry, and on behalf of St. Vincent de Paul Father Joe's Villages, we are excited to bring our two 100% affordable projects to Oceanside. The first of which is the Rancho del Oro Sprinter Station redevelopment in conjunction with North County Transit Center, as well as the 901 Peer View Project, which we're here to talk about tonight. Now, I understand that there are many things that go into allocating the limited resources available for these projects. We understand that all of the projects that were presented met the requirements under the NOFA, or at least did so after some of the requirements were dropped. Staff said projects would be given preference based on readiness and based on providing a preference for veterans. The two projects that were recommended for funding tonight, El Camino Real, did not provide any veterans funding, veterans housing, and Coast Villas aren't applying for tax credits till next year. The 901 Peer View Project is 64 units of 100% affordable housing for seniors, families, and veterans. It'll be making between $25,000 and $85,000 a year. We are the only project listed as shovel-ready that has full entitlements. We have a lender and investor commitment, and we are ready to go in for our tax credits Tuesday next week pending the receipt of the vouchers, which are required for us to be able to get the funding to build an affordable project. We also have the highest percentage of extremely low-income units. We know that these homes are desperately needed. We were at the commission meeting last night, and we heard from our residents that they need these homes. We are shovel-ready. We will be the fastest to start construction, will be the fastest to bring these homes to fruition. If our fund, if our project's not funded now, it will be at least six to 12 months because of how the funding cycles go.
Thank you very much.
Before we can.
Thank you.
Come in, which will drive up costs.
Thank you. Donna Gierman, followed by Brianna, followed by Jasmine Cruz Moreno.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have concerns about the Coast Villa project. Reading the staff notes, they're getting funding from No Place Like Home. I'm sure you're all aware of the Carlsbad Windsor Point and their problems, the 800 police calls in two years, the child that was sexually assaulted. There's, when you're using No Place Like Fund, No Place Like Home funding, they have certain criteria that you can't change. These people need, and you're mixing people together. Here, Leilani says 100% seniors at 50% AMI or less. Well, No Place Like Home funding, no. 50% of those people are going to be severely mentally ill, and they pull them from all over the county. Not 100% seniors, not local people. Please talk to City Council in Carlsbad. They said it's the worst decision they ever made doing Windsor Point with the No Place Like Home funding. They wish they never did it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna, followed by Jasmeen Cruz Moreno.
Good evening. My name is Brianna. I'm here on behalf of Olive Park Housing. I highly support it. I work right there in the, in the area at Albertson's. I see the need for it. A lot of employees at my store, they have to rent rooms out from other people and, sorry, I'm nervous. It's highly, highly, would be appreciative, and we could succeed as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmeen Cruz Moreno, followed by Christina Moreno, followed by Shelley Parker.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jasmine Cruz Moreno, and I'm going towards the Olive Park Apartments. There's three that you guys have to support, and Olive Park is one of the ones that I think that you guys should support and fund. There's a lot of families here in Oceanside that are struggling, and my family is one, and maybe these apartments aren't for us, but they're for someone else in need here in Oceanside. The people who are struggling with housing are the same people who have worked and lived in our Oceanside community for most of their lives. I don't find it just that these are the people that have to leave just because the rents are increasing drastically. Many people have to rent rooms in their apartments just to be able to pay rent, and they put their families in danger. and they put their families in danger. These affordable homes will be a great opportunity for many of the families that are struggling. And if you're sitting here, it's because the Oceanside community chose to trust you and believes that each of you will make great and just choices to help them. Having these projects go through will help so many families. And Olive Park Apartments also, on the slides that they showed, it, it has 172 units just for families. One bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. The other ones had 56 units and 111. That's 167 units combined, and here is 172 units. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christina Moreno, followed by Shelley Parker.
Hola, mi nombre es Cristina Moreno. Soy miembro de la Iglesia Santa María Estrella del Mar, y tengo más de 20 años viviendo en Oceanside.
Hello, my name is Cristina Moreno, and I'm a member of St. Mary's Star of the Sea, and I have more than 20 years living in Oceanside.
Pero en estos últimos tres años pasados, las rentas están muy caras. Un gran problema para nosotros y para nuestra comunidad.
In the last three years, the rents has been extremely expensive, and it's been difficult for, it's been a problem for myself and for our community members.
Yo soy voluntaria de catequesis en la iglesia por más de diez años, y tengo el privilegio de hablar con los padres de los niños, y ellos me comentan sus preocupaciones por la situación que está pasando por todas las rentas. Muchos se han movido de lugar.
I'm a volunteer, and I teach catechism for the last 10 years. And I have heard many of the families and the children of those families who are concerned and have complained about the rent and the cost of living that has been caused here.
Es muy difícil encontrar rentas con precios justos. Las corporaciones parecen leones que quieren devorar a las personas que no ganan más de 10,000 dólares al mes.
It's really challenging to find rent prices that are affordable, that are something that, actually, we see the corporations that are somewhat like lions, that are trying to devour the people here, the families that make no more than $10,000 a month.
Hoy me dirijo a ustedes para decirles que a ustedes los ha elegido la comunidad de Oceanside.
I come here to say to you that our Oceanside community has elected you.
Y les pregunto.
And I would like to ask.
A ustedes.
I know to ask you.
¿Qué han hecho ustedes por las personas más vulnerables de Oceanside?
What have all of you done for the most vulnerable here in Oceanside?
¿Y qué están dispuestos a hacer hoy?
And what are you willing to do today?
Ustedes son las manos y los pies de Cristo.
You are the hands and feet of Christ.
Observen las necesidades que nos rodean.
Observe the necessities that are around us.
Evalúen los recursos que hay.
Look at the resources around us.
Y den lo que puedan.
And give what you can.
Para que resuelvan el problema de vivienda para la comunidad.
So that you can resolve the problems of housing in our community.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Shelley Parker.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Shelley Parker. I'm going to speak as a part of the Housing Commission. The one thing that I did want, I'm glad Director Hines stated that we had asked to do three projects. There is $18 million in that fund. And it's not just because we want to spend the money. One, we need the housing. But two, next year, or in 18 months, housing price of building goes up, labor costs go up, insurance goes up. And so the money that is in that fund will buy less if we wait. That was the rationale behind trying to put another project into actual movement through this. And instead of doing the 159 or whatever the total was, we could double that. And we actually do have a need for this. We, this, this area of housing is the, we're behind in that. So waiting, while I understand government being conservative, and it's nice to have a little pot of money, it's only going to cost more in the future to actually build what is, is on the table right now. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Amber Kenyotoa, followed by Gabina Martinez.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I stand before you tonight. I've told my story many times. As a member of this community in District 4 specifically since 2002, is one of the very first residents to ever live in one of our first affordable housing developments, in Old Grove Apartments. I would not be here today in front of you if it wasn't for securing that housing when I was a college student, just like Macy. I like the Olive Park Apartments for its location and it being next to, having easy access to the college and having the built-in community center. We also need to serve these families, and the veterans will also be served within this facility. I, I was a college student. I was raised by a single mom who had lots of housing insecurity. Getting into low-income housing allowed me to establish a foundation to be a next-generation Oceansider. And as I raise my 10-year-old and my six-year-old, I want to know that there's going to be options for them to continue to branch out into the community that are affordable and acceptable. But not just for our children, because there are a bunch of empty nesters out here whose kids are now not living in the state or not living in the city, and we're breaking up families, parents from their children and their grandchildren. But we also have to consider our public safety officers, our teachers, the workers of our tourist industry at our hotels and our restaurants. Affordable housing ranked as one of the top five on the Measure X survey. So it's not like we're doing something that isn't what the community wants and needs. My, my thoughts are that we should spend the money now and make sure we spend them on the right projects, make sure they're with good community partners. Olive Park appears to be so, and I hope to see that it follows through. Also, targeting seniors is very important because they're the number-one fastest-growing population in our homeless population right now. So let's make sure that we also keep people in their homes by giving them options that are affordable, and that reduces our crisis with homelessness right now. 361 students in Oceanside Unified and 275, or 361.
Thank you very much.
Lots of kids are homeless here. Let's keep them housed.
Gabina Martinez, followed by Thomas LaCroix, followed by Beth Barnum.
Mi nombre es Gabina Martinez. Vivo aquí en Oceanside por 20 años, y vengo con el grupo de la comunidad de Oceanside. Venimos a apoyar, venimos a pedirles para que nos apoyen al proyecto.
Good evening. My name is Gabina Martinez, and I'm a member here in the community of Oceanside. And I've been a member of the community for 20 years. I'm here with my community because I come in approval of and support of.
Venimos a que nos apoyen para el apartamento del, el proyecto que es el Oliver Park, para que nos apoyen porque nosotros pues, nos han subido mucho de renta y no podemos pagar. Estamos ganando lo mínimo y no nos alcanza para pagar la renta.
I'm coming in support of the Olive Park Apartments and the Olive Apartments project because they are increasing our rents. This area is becoming unaffordable, and I am coming in support of this area because we need this affordable housing.
Ah, por eso queremos que, que por favor nos apoyen en este proyecto.
And this is why I ask that you please support us with this project.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas LaCroix, followed by Beth Barnum, followed by Beatrice Palmer.
Hi, my name is Thomas LaCroix, and obligatory, I was born here. You know, I was, I'm 35 years old. You know, I've been here a long time. I really care about the community. And I see a lot of people here who need this housing. This is what the INLU fees, this is, as far as I understand it, this is the INLU fees pay for this house. It's what the exact housing that we need. It's next to Transit. It's 100% affordable. And there's really no large project that goes in anywhere that isn't going to get a lot of pushback. So I just would like to see good leadership, you know? And no matter what, there's going to be pushback. But this is exactly what we need, so build it. That's it.
Beth Barnum, to be followed by Beatrice Palmer. Is Beth Barnum here? All right, then we'll move to Beatrice Palmer, to be followed by Megan Lay, to be followed by Zoe Erickson.
Honorable Mayor Esther Sanchez and the council and the staff, thank you so much for this opportunity to advocate for that third housing development for families. I'm fully in support of Olive Park. I live right next to this future community. When you were elected and you took this oath, you swore to meet the needs of the community as best as you could. This is your opportunity. This is your opportunity to invest in that third development. Dr. Martin Luther King, during his "I Have a Dream" speech, said that he wanted jobs. He wanted for racism to end, and he wanted equal access for housing. It's 2024, and we're still asking for equal access to housing. This is your opportunity. I live right next to it. This development will have a resource center built into it led by a nonprofit, local nonprofit called Las Palmas. It will meet the needs of our future college students. It's right down the road from college. That helps break down generational poverty by allowing access to education. It allows access to local grocery stores. It allows access to good schools. And according to the McKinney Vento, I want to read you the numbers. Oceanside Unified has 275 students experiencing homelessness, and Vista Unified has 897. I give you the numbers of Vista because some of our Oceanside residents attend Vista Unified. So I'm asking you, let's take this step in affirming the needs of the community, meeting the needs of the community by developing that third space for families on Olive Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Megan Lay, followed by Zoe Erickson.
Hello. My name's Megan Lay. I live on Olive Drive. I am one of the people that will be affected by the Olive Park project. I'm also here with my neighbors who are in green in this section. We do not support it. The reasons why we do not support it is because it's a risk to our neighborhood. Right next to the project's site is a cliff, and there has been landslide creep. So if the soil's disturbed, I believe that it will actually lead to a landslide. In addition to that, I'm not sure why this is actually even being considered for funding because there was a lot of missing documents. We didn't have the environmental report. We don't have any traffic reports. I think it would be irresponsible and risky to go and put any money towards this project. There are four other projects that are available to put funding towards, and it should be going to that. Another reason why I don't think that this is a good project to fund is that there is only one access point. It's through my neighborhood on Olive Drive. It is not directly connected to College Boulevard. It does not connect to Oceanside Boulevard. So if there's any kind of emergency, if there's a fire, you're going to have 280-plus apartment complexes, people that are residents in there trying to get through my street all at once. And that's going to cause a huge safety hazard. So my conclusion is, is that you should not go and fund the Olive Park Apartments at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe Erickson, followed by Isabel Mendez.
Hi, council and mayor. Nice to see you all. I really vehemently suggest you not invest in this, this project. I've looked over the plans. Granted, I can't understand a lot of it. However, as Meg said, you don't have an environmental, environmental impact report yet. You don't have a topography report that's current. Looking at the plans, there are nine waivers, six of which have to do with the, the slope. Plus, there had been at least four attempts to develop that, that land, and there's been a reason for it. And it hasn't been just because we were concerned about the traffic on our little street. It has to do with the land has not stopped moving. That was a riverbed. That's why we have Loma Alta, I mean, Creek. We also have the estuary down there. We're a united group. We were not encouraged by the developer to come and speak. We are a united group, and we're just now getting organized. And we are ready to start organizing to find out other avenues. There's a lot of different things that we need to do. And we're hoping the city council will help us by not funding this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Isabel Mendez, followed by Aquilina Rosas, followed by Carol Lay.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Pardon, I'm Isabel Mendez. Estoy aquí para apoyar el proyecto de Olive Apartments.
Good, good afternoon. Pardon me, good evening. My name is Isabel Mendez, and I'm here in support of the Olive Apartments.
Hi. Tengo más de 30 años viviendo en Oceanside y trabajando. Soy una persona trabajadora. Trabajo yo y mi esposo, pero ganamos lo mínimo. No nos alcanza para la renta. La renta cada vez está subiendo más. Estoy apoyando. Aquí tenemos un equipo de la comunidad para apoyar este, este proyecto.
Here's my community behind me, and we are here to support this project because we are hard-working people. My husband and I have been here in Oceanside for 30 years, and we have been working, and we only make minimum wage. And I'm concerned because the rents are increasing.
Y estamos, estoy pidiendo por favor que nos apoyen con este proyecto. Este es una necesidad, lo necesitamos.
I'm asking that you please support this project because it is a necessity. This is a need that we have. Housing is a need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aquilina Rosas. Aquilina Rosas, going once. Aquilina Rosas going twice. Carol Lay. Carol Lay? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm Carol Lay. Thank you for your time. I'm really still against this project of Olive Park Apartments. We do need homes, you know, affordable homes, but the only access is going to be Olive Drive. And I have to reiterate, there's only 10 houses deep. You're going to turn my street into a driveway. It's going to be a driveway into the Olive Park Apartments, and it's not going to be safe for us. Our children aren't going to be able to play on the streets or on the sidewalk. And I don't even know how you're going to get two-way traffic in there. I don't think it's a, for me, it's just that you've got to find another way in and out. It can't be on our street. It's just not equipped for that. And I just want to thank you for your time, and that's all.
Thank you. Ron Dwyer-Voss, followed by Aaron Ibarra.
Hi, Ron Dwyer-Voss, resident of downtown Oceanside, member of the Housing Commission, member of Oceanside Sanctuary Justice Works. Another great night for democracy in Oceanside. It's awesome. I'm proud of it. I'm a saver. I'm pretty conservative with money stuff. I like to keep money in accounts. I don't, I get nervous when they get low, except for in-lu fees. In-lu fees represent lost units the second they're collected, and they lose value every day. Leaving them in account essentially squanders them away, squanders away desperately affordable units for families. Staff prepared for you a great report. It shows that the first two ranked projects generate 167 units at an average of $61,000 of city investment in in-lu funds, which is great since units cost about a half a million dollar to make. A third project would bring us to 339 units of 47,000. Saving $6 million a year for future use would reduce the number of units by 15% to 20% a year based on current inflation of a construction cost. That would become 124 units in just two years. So saving the money for the future would cost us 48 units today. We don't have that. So we have the money. We have the land. We have good developers. We've got four good projects. I'm just here to encourage you to spend it, and hopefully, we don't have to do in-lu fees anymore, and we just get units out of project.
Thank you very much. Aaron Ibarra, is he here? No? How about Michael? Michael? Okay, how about Brian? You, Brian? Okay.
Hi, my name is Brian McHale. I represent the applicant in partnership with Daylight Community Development and our nonprofit partner, Las Palmas Housing, based locally here in North County. We have been working on this project for over two years. It is a nearly 44-acre site. And of course, any 44-acre site that's left in Oceanside with direct connection to a sprinter line would certainly have complications. And I hear what the neighbors of Olive Drive are saying with regards to the access point. And quite frankly, that was the first thing we looked at. We spoke with a bridge and tunnel engineer to see, could we build a road west to Rancho del Oro? Can we go north over the tracks? Can we go north under the creek? Could we go south and build a tunnel through to the southern streets? The only way to access the site was east, although we did get easement approval access from NCTD for secondary emergency vehicle access road. So in terms of timing, our project has the exact same timeline as any housing element site because we've been at it for over two years now, and we are scheduled to be entitled by year-end. We've clearly done some community outreach beyond what's required in the city. And when we do this outreach, the first question we have is exactly the same question that Leilani had when she first heard about the project. How soon? The second question is, how many? Can we tell our family about it? Can we tell our friends about it? Or is it such a finite resource that I need to keep it to myself? Yes, it's a big site. And yes, as you can see here displayed, this is the original general plan map from 1986. This map shows and zoomed in that this site since 1986 has been zoned as medium-density residential with the only access being through Olive Drive. Olive Drive was never designed as a cul-de-sac, although the residents that live there, I recognize it's difficult.
Thank you very much.
Who?
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. So to staff, I heard a question, or actually, a comment about the Coast Highway project and whether it would be the same experience as a project that was done in Carlsbad. And maybe you might want to have...
Yeah, so I'll start it off and maybe have our developers come to the podium to speak about that. But I think permanent supportive housing and the use of No Place Like Home funds is a relatively new type of product. We are learning with every project and getting better and better at it. Our Greenbrier Village project is one that is utilizing No Place Like Home. The developers utilizing some new technology, a lot of security. And they have been operating this type of project. So I'll turn it over to John Seymour.
Thanks, Leilani. John Seymour from the nonprofit National Community Renaissance, also AJ Galca Donier from our Permanent Supportive Housing Resident Services, Stephanie De La Torre as well from Hope, and our co-development partner Ted Mihara from Sandy U. Community Housing. So I wanted to specifically address tonight, again, it's just 54 homes, one for, sorry, 56 homes, one for the onsite full-time manager, 12 units for the unhoused Oceanside veterans. That is the component that I think is causing concern. And then 43 low-income seniors. That's the project. All 43 low-income seniors and the 12 unhoused Oceanside veterans are from Oceanside. They're not going to come from El Cajon or Chula Vista. They are here in Oceanside. So as to the safety, peaceful enjoyment, and the good living environment at Coast Villas, we have over 1,200 permanent supportive housing units that are either leased up or in process. Greenbrier Village is one of them, and it's just received its certificate of occupancy today, which will start leasing up. The, we admit that the state's housing-first housing policy is not perfect. It has many flaws and challenges, and there is legislation to fix it. So what has National Core done to kind of weave in and out of the housing-first policy to make sure that we have safe, enjoyable communities? It's not one tool. It's not one approach. But what we do employ is a very, very robust internal staff and third-party mandatory boot camp training program, protocols, education for each other's safety, mutual support, respect for each other, et cetera, et cetera. We have services to combat isolation. And early on in the relationship with the residents, we have police and first responders at our meetings. Emergency preparedness and safety workshops are held the first six months. We have onsite security. We have high-def security cameras, technology, as Leilani mentioned, considering, et cetera. On the issue of substance abuse, drug dealing, manufacturing and distribution is strictly illegal on all of our properties. Illegal drugs and public intoxication by our residents is not tolerated, and we move to eviction. Payment of rent is due. Money management and training courses are always there for them. Substance abuse endangers our residents' housing and other residents onsite. Security, we will have onsite security. We always do, as well as the high-def cameras and et cetera. There are other ways to do this, but we found that through our Hope Through Housing Foundation and our other third-party providers, and in this case, the Veterans Administration, with their involvement for our 12 unhoused Oceanside veterans, we're going to be okay. I ask you to judge us on our past performance in the city of Oceanside, Mission Cove. People have no idea there's permanent supportive housing at Mission Cove. There's unhoused vet, well, there's formerly unhoused. There's formerly homeless veterans at Mission Cove right now. People have no idea. There's kids that have come out of the foster care system that have been homeless and are at risk of homelessness, and those two are permanent supportive housing units. I'm not going to get into the weeds anymore on this, but I think I answered your question. But Ted and I, we're here to answer any other questions that the council may have on Coast Villas.
Very different from Carlsbad.
Very. So the Carlsbad Windsor Apartments, that's a scattered site. 25 units, 25 units. 50% of both of those 25s are permanent supportive housing. Okay? This one, Coast Villas, we have 12 units out of the 56. Very different. We're not 50%. I think we're at 12% or 13% permanent supportive housing through the Veterans Administration for unhoused Oceanside veterans. That's the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to council, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you very much. Everything we heard. Normally, I try to really evaluate what staff gives us and be supportive, but in this case, I'm leaning with the recommendation from the Housing Commission. So I'd like to move that we, with staff recommendation, I won't read through them, but one, two, with the amendment to add the Olive Park Apartment Project, three, as is, I guess, and four, if nothing else, and there needs to be change. Is that, hopefully, that's clear enough?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to speak against that motion before Councilmember Joyce, you explain your second. We have been receiving emails from this neighborhood that is right next door to that site, who has been trying to work with the developer and has been met by a wall. And I am very concerned. This is a risky, risky project that has no access. It's not close to any, and we're talking about homeless. And we're talking about low income. There's no, there's no services nearby. There's no way to get in and out of there. And I think that what we're looking at, there's still an EIR. It's so problematic that it's not just, oh, I don't want it in my backyard. It's, this project is just not the right project. It's just not the right project. So I'm, I know I'm getting the same emails that everyone else has, and I know that I'm getting the same calls as everyone else. So I really do feel very strongly that that, that we should say no to that one. I would like to be able to have funds available in case and when rentals sells. The school district is going to be selling rentals. They've already, you know, basically evicted everybody from the school because of the problems that they have onsite and, of course, enrollment going down for schools. I want to be able to have money to be able to use for those kind of projects. I know that there's already one, another one that may be coming up really soon. I mean, there are all these other projects that are very, very possible and probably better and in a better place to be able to be low-income and have services nearby and be able to get onto some kind of transit. So I would urge us to instead support staff's recommendation for these first two. I do feel that the Coast Highway project is very different from Carlsbad, that we have a developer who has a really successful track record in National Core and is doing the same kind of project that, finishing, I guess it's, you just got occupancy. So, and as to the second one that is being proposed, Merka, they actually, the project developer is doing the one over here on South River Village's apartments. They just did groundbreaking. They had the bankers there. They had other financial people there. They had their whole team there, and they're very excited, not just about doing that one. And I think that was 55 units of affordable, next to transit, by the way, but also about the one on, on College. Is it College? No, it's El Camino Real, El Camino Real. So I'm, I think that they're definitely committed. It was, you know, I was surprised to meet the developer of one that was on the list and on the list for recommendations, so I really did appreciate that. But, so I'm really sold on the first two. I do think that the others are possibly problematic, especially this one. And I'll ask staff, is, which one of the last three are the riskiest?
So as stated by the developer of the Peer View Way product, it's already entitled. They are really ready to go. It is shovel-ready. Olive Park has a little bit of a longer haul. It's a discretionary action. There will be an EIR that is required. So in terms of entitlement process, it's, when you compare the two, that Olive Park is much more riskier.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Joyce.
So just following up on that, Olive Park will have to do an EIR. That's correct.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, so there will be, there will be a lot more information to go on. Do we have the two projects, first of all, fully in support of the project on Coast Highway? Happy to welcome you back to District One, where I represent the other project that you're, that you just got the occupancy certification for. So welcome back. The other two projects I do want to speak to in a separate vein, are there off-ramps before the two-year mark? I actually want to move as many of these units forward as possible. I'm worried, like, are we going to find out in six months that one of these is not good, but our agreement says we're going to tie up the money for two years? Like, are there, are there any other ways to do that? Or can you explain to me why two years specifically?
So we do a two-year reservation for exactly that fact, is that if a project, sometimes it does, it takes, it's a very competitive market in the tax credit and bond world. So it doesn't, you know, the first try may not work. And so we give them the opportunity to try again. That's why there's a 24-month opportunity. We have two projects, Submitted Shadow Way and both the Merka El Camino Real site that have already applied. So we'll know by August whether or not they are successful. All indications are probably that the El Camino Real project will be successful in that funding round. But you never know until the committee puts out the recommendation. So that's why we tie it up for 24 months.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like there's a lot of flexibility with the two years. Like, that's probably good practice. But there's a chance that we find out sooner, and then that money begins free again? They'll be, they'll be cool with us and tell us ahead of time, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's, I'm just wondering about standard practice. I've never done this before. So thank you to staff at Housing Commission and the full house at the Affordable Housing Workshop that we held together so long ago. This is one of those amazing outcomes of that collaboration, and I'm excited to see these units come forward. I just want to remind everybody that affordable housing is workforce housing. A low-income family of four making $121,000 per year is considered low income. That's two adults, two kids, the two parents working, making about $60,000 a year. As a reminder, the starting salary for Oceanside Unified School District is $46,000 per year. So they're not even, they're not even touching low income. They're further down. They're actually in the very low-income category. It's not, this nomenclature of affordable housing and low income can carry these weights, but we're really talking about the people that work and live in our city. And we desperately need family units. When you look at the rest, that have skyrocketed. The three bedrooms are off the charts compared to the rest. It's desperation time for families. That's why we see so many of our kids leaving Oceanside Unified School District and ending up living in Escondido and going into their, their school districts or even further away. So I guess I would prefer something that gave us a little more flexibility on the two projects, but I'm going to support the motion that was put forward. Last year, 2023, we built nine low-income units and zero very-low-income units. We have to get moving on this. We can't pick and choose with a fine-toothed home and tweezers. We have to move forward because even if we move these three forward, is it likely that one of them will not make it through? I mean, that tends to happen pretty frequently with these types of projects. So I'm in support of the motion before us.
Councilmember Weiss.
So this action is to provide a funding allocation only. We are not approving any project features today.
No, they will still need to go through their entitlement process through development services. All your funding today, or your action today, is to reserve financing should they meet all the different conditions, getting their tax credit, getting their entitlements.
For the Olive project, I heard an EIR. So they're going to do comprehensive geotechnical analysis, traffic, habitat analysis, air quality, everything else.
Absolutely.
And that will be a public process that the community will have an input, and any comments they make will have to be addressed as part of that EIR.
Absolutely.
It's interesting that, you know, just a little while ago, the mayor made a comment about commissions. Here, we have a recommendation from the Housing Commission, and we're looking to just completely disregard it. And I honestly, I agree with the motion, and I support what the Housing Commission is recommending for the same reason that Councilmember Joyce just said. I'd rather take the money and put it into projects now. They may not happen. But unless we take that step to start that process, to get it moving, I'd rather move it than sit around and wait. So I will be supportive of the motion. So I will be supportive of the motion.
Thank you. By the way, I went to that Mish Commission meeting, and the recommendation was for a third. It did not say Olive. Thank you. Councilmember, oh, Deputy Mayor Keim.
Hi, where to begin? I've been, I try to be in politics, I try to be pretty consistent. When we had our housing workshop, I wanted to focus our growth and our smart and sustainable corridors. We have big projects like the Olive one that empties out onto arterial instead of a collector road like a Bradley or something like that. I think that's appropriate. That's why I wanted to focus the density in the smart and sustainable corridors and put the 15% inclusionary. I was overridden by colleagues. One of my colleagues wants to build as much affordable housing as possible and right now. And all of a su- Well, and, which is noble, but as soon as these projects come forward, 100%, 100% affordable, not even 15%, we say no. And so I just, I think you need to be consistent in leadership and say the same things last year and last month that you said today. So I've been consistent. I'm concerned when you have big projects. We're not voting on that project. We're voting on money. I'm going to support staff's recommendation for those two projects and not the Olive project. But I think, I, I think, hold on. Again, I, I would ask all, be consistent. If you want affordable house, if you want affordable housing, support affordable housing. If you want growth in smart, sustainable corridors, I, I think we need consistency. And so I'm not going to be supporting the motion. Thank you.
So there's no other lights. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And, and actually, I want to go ahead and bifurcate the, the, the motion. So to two, because I do support the, the staff's recommendation, and I want to be able to vote yes on those and no on the Olive. So first motion for staff's recommendation and then second motion for Olive.
Point of order, we're just voting on, it's, if, that those two are included in that, in the three.
I'd like to bifurcate the, the motion. Or else just go ahead and state on the record that my, my vote is only for, for the first two and not the third.
You're point of order, so yes or no on the motion that's made.
I, I can do whatever I want here, dude. So.
Mayor, we all have to follow the rules.
So my, my motion, okay, go ahead and vote. And I want my motion to reflect that I support the first two and not the third.
So, so you're not inputting a vote right now?
That's correct.
We're voting on a new motion named by Councilmember Robinson right now.
Okay. Yes.
I've done it before.
Okay, but, all right. I just don't know how we're going to record it. Is it going to be?
No, I'm not abstaining. I'm supporting the first two.
Well, motion approves. See, here's, here's where it gets complicated. It's three, one, but you're supporting the first part of the motion, but not the second part of the motion.
That's correct. Yes. I'm supporting staff's recommendation. I'm not supporting the third.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we'll make sure that's reflected in the minutes.
Yes. Thank you. So next is Public Communications with advance request to speak, item number 38.
Those are 10 o'clock.
Patrick Hartley. Oh, it is 10 o'clock.
Don't we have it since it's 10 o'clock?
It is 10 o'clock.
No.
So we have to make a mo, we, they have to have a motion pass.
Mayor, may I interject? You only have to do that if you're commencing a public hearing or public discussion item. I think the only thing that's left is non-agenda public comment. So you really, it's not necessary.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You only need a vote to continue past 10 if you're commencing a public hearing item or a discussion item. There are no public, you can continue to go.
Okay, so we can continue? I thought that-
You can cut the time down if you want to get through non-agenda public comment.
To, to one minute then?
Yeah.
To one minute. Well, what about the advance request to speak? Can I cut that down too? All right, so advance request to speak, Patrick Hartley, one minute. In light of the hour, yes. How many requests to speak do we have on items not on the agenda?
Well, on items not on the agenda, we have one group and 26 speakers.
26?
One group.
26 speakers.
And one group.
What do you, what do you mean in one, and one group?
And one group.
So 36 minutes.
I'm sure not 26.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just go ahead with your minute and see if we have anybody else.
So they're going to have two minutes? I only get one?
No, no, everyone is having one minute. Unless we, we can continue all of these until the next council meeting in August. We're, we're at 10 o'clock. We're actually after 10.
Yeah, I know.
So one minute.
Relax, relax.
One minute. Thank you.
Someone on this council said that they wouldn't put the ceasefire on the agenda because some people, I assume pro-Israeli, contacted them saying that they were in fear. But what have we done to create fear in this room? Let's ask the chief of police, anyone? What, have we been disrespectful or disruptive? No. We might speak out from time to time, but realistically, all we've done is ask you to consider a ceasefire, consider standing up for human rights. Have we said anything anti-Semitic? No. We can ask the police, have we said anything like that? We haven't disrupted. How can you put limitations on what we can and cannot speak on in our community? Why are you giving certain voices more weight than others? And, and cutting our time? There are many ways. I know what the, they're, they're going to say that to justify their egregious human rights violations. Give me 10 seconds, please.
10 seconds.
While you're out there barbecuing this Fourth of July and taking a walk, enjoying life, remember that if you're not speaking up, it's because you're in fear of, and you're going to attract that. I know you can come from a place of light and compassion to create peace, not just for the world, but for yourself, because it's already happened. Have a safe and pleasant.
Thank you very much. Now to the, continue.
The group is only getting one minute?
Yes.
Okay. So Arlene Hammerschmidt, are the following people here with you? Barry Blumenthal?
The group?
Well. It's, it's a group presentation.
To the others first to see how many, how much they have? Because I want to give. Okay, so.
It's all in order.
Can, can we do the, okay, you have 21, you told me you had 21 speakers, right?
We have 26 speakers, including the group. That does not include the group.
Okay, let's go to those people first.
The group or the 26?
To the 26.
Okay. Sorry, Arlene. We'll move to the first one, Karen Solotto.
Is Karen Solotto here?
Karen, Karen Solotto? Not here.
Okay, next.
Carol McConnell. Carol McConnell. No Carol McConnell. Amber, do we have Amber? All right, followed by Christine Gorman?
Christine Gorman is here, or was.
Okay, Amber, followed by Christine Gorman, followed by Tom Demoy. Amber, whenever you're ready.
Okay. The amount of murdered Palestinians has surpassed 38,000, with more than 15,000 being children. 103 Palestinian journalists have been murdered in the past five months, and 224 humanitarian aid workers have been killed. The illegal settler colony of Israel has murdered those reporting on the truth in Palestine so they can twist their own version. But the numbers do not lie. 38,000 Palestinians have died. Please hear us and add a permanent ceasefire resolution to the city council agenda. Esther, that definition of protesting is the expression of disapproval and/or objection to something. We have been and will continue to peacefully show or support a Palestinian liberation and the anger at our tax dollars, city and institutions funding a genocide. Esther, I'm glad you feel, you enjoy saying that you feel safe with a police escort every city council meeting, but we have never been a physical threat to you, and you know that. You know how it pains those of us who are here who want the city council to take steps to stop funding genocide. You're making the people who come to these public hearings to speak and demonstrate, you are making us unsafe. You are exacerbating the friction between protesters and police. You are making us, the people you are supposed to serve, unsafe.
Sorry. Christine Gorman?
Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'd like to speak on an issue that you've heard before. And I sent you, I think it's about three weeks now, I emailed each one of you individually with a, a draft resolution for you to look at. And I specifically asked each one of you to please respond. So you could say yes, you could say no, you could make some comment, but it doesn't feel good to just be totally ignored. Elections are coming up, and somebody who is, you know, running for office said to me that he thinks it's up to every single, it's, it's the duty of every city council member to answer every email, to respond. And three weeks, I have no response, not from a single person. I want to point out, just to clarify, you see this here? Now recently on the news, it was made out to-
Thank you.
It was not anti-Semitic. It was not against a Jewish synagogue. It was against the fact that they were having a re-
Thank you very much.
A real estate sale to sell Palestinian land to Jewish people in their synagogue. That's what the argument was about. It was not against.
Tom Demoy, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Councilman, my two-minute speech is down to a one-minute speech. I'm here to express my absolute opposition to, to oppose Olive Park Apartments. I'm in the wrong spot, but still, it's all about, I'm not against low housing at all. It's the traffic development is likely to worsen existing traffic issues and strained local infrastructure. My estimates for the 335 proposed parking spaces will create over 1,000 car trips a day on Olive Drive. That also safety, and that will contribute to 50,000 cars to College Boulevard as well. So you put these apartments here, 1,000 cars per day on this quiet little cul-de-sac. I say exit out on Oceanside Boulevard. You guys, and they're going to say, no, it's totally impossible, it will never work. I say it could work. Thank you.
Jimmy Knott, followed by Ryan Jones.
Mayor, council members, I want to take and to let the public know that your council and mayor are for raising your water rates 20%. Again, your council and mayor are for raising your water rates 20% because on today's agenda, there was no direction to our Water Utilities Director, Lindsay Leahy, to take and oppose tomorrow on the County, San Diego County Water Authority's agenda, the increase. There was no direction on today.
That's not the water, that's not the Water Authority tomorrow.
Yes, there is. It was given to you at the last city council meeting, saying it was going to be tomorrow. And you are taking by your absence, saying it will be, you are supporting it.
Thank you very much. Ryan Jones, followed by Carmen.
Ryan Jones?
Ryan Jones, gone. Carmen, gone. Macy?
Carmen is here.
Okay, Carmen, followed by Macy.
Okay, I want to give you a, I'm thankful I have that time about taking your minute.
Give it to the city clerk.
Okay, so this pamphlet that I am going to be giving to every one of you, and by the way, anybody here who wants, I'm distributing it to all Americans that I can distribute it to. This pamphlet was put together, was published by Jews for Justice in the Middle East, was distributed by If Americans Knew. This is an explanation of what happened to the Palestinian people. It dates back to before the, even the 1800s, and when Zionism, the whole concept of Zionism came into place. And it talks about the indigenous people of Israel, which is Palestinian people. I'm not saying that there weren't any Jews, but the bulk of indigenous people were and are the Palestinians. Today, this morning, there was a webinar that took place on Capitol Hill. It was congressional briefing, and it was physicians who recently returned from Gaza on medical missions.
All right, thank you very much. Macy, followed by Larry Cornet.
This whole minute thing is really disgraceful. We've been sitting here for five hours and we only get a minute. City Council and Mayor, we've been asking to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda since January of this year. By the time you meet back here in August without any changes, by President Biden and the war criminal cabinet of Israel, thousands more children will have died. 10 children a day, can you all look at me? 10 children a day lose a leg in Gaza. In two months, that's 600 limbs, more than that. You hear me? 600 limbs. Trust me, I know my country is not innocent either. I asked my dad if we ever used bombs like Israel does in Gaza. He said yes, a couple times in Iraq and Afghanistan, they used a bomb called the Daisy Cutter. That amounts to 15,000 pounds of explosives. These types of weapons do not eliminate terrorists, they inspire them. When your little sister loses her leg and your dad was killed for being a man over the age of 18, what do you think that kid will think of the world? That he would strive for peace in a world that is only shown in violence? I have to assume you're all too scared to address this for political reelection reasons. And it's just disgraceful. So is Mike Levin, so is your relationship with him.
Thank you very much, Macy.
And so has been this whole meeting.
Thank you. Larry Cornet, followed by Hayden Centeno.
Thank you, Your Honor and City Council. Sangwa Dekol Chen, Hersh Goldberg Cohen, Gadi Hagi, Judith Weinstein Hagi, Omer Nutra, and Keith Sagal, Eden Alexander Ita Chen. Those are the American hostages that are being held. And I would hope that when we call for a ceasefire, we also call for the release of every single hostage in captivity. Blocking the entrance to any house of worship, be it church or mosque, is an affront. But I guess synagogues don't have that. I would call on JVP, SJP, and CARE to have a resolution that all houses of worship be open, period. And if we call for BDS, remember Gentec, Coca-Cola, FedEx, and UPS pay a lot of taxes here. So be careful what you wish for. Thank you.
Thank you. Hayden Centeno, followed by Megan Lay.
Hello. I'd actually like to give my time to Arlene, and speaking here.
We'll get to the group.
Thank you.
Megan Lay, followed by Ryan.
Yes, I'm here to speak on the Olive Park Apartments project again. I know that affordable housing is important, but there, yes, but I'm also on this to speak about this matter that just happened. Because this is the thing, is that there was two other motions, or two other projects that were available. So I'm wondering why you specifically chose the Olive Park Apartments when you have the whole neighborhood here that do not support and have said how it's going to negatively impact our quality of life? Oceanside, the city is supposed to protect its residents and our quality of life, and you guys have negatively impacted it by giving this project funding. Also, I noticed that the developer that spoke at the end also said that the street behind, which is associated with the North County Transportation Department, our district, they did not approve any large machinery going on the road. So I'm going to be in touch with all of you guys and be speaking about this project in the future. I hope you guys hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, followed by Oscar, followed by Dan.
Good evening, council and everyone in attendance. A lot of us are here wearing red tonight to symbolize a red line, the red line for the people in Gaza who are experiencing a genocide. We know that Rafa was supposed to be a red line, but our government endorsed Israel and allowed them to invade to cause even more death and destruction and the ongoing genocide in Palestine, in Gaza. Over 40,000 have been, have been killed, over 15,000 children. That's almost surely an undercount. The UN has said 700- The UN has said 700,000 are now at risk of starvation. And I know these are all numbers, but I really want to communicate the human side of this. We're wearing, we're wearing red because nine months of genocide is a red line. Your refusal to put a ceasefire on the agenda is complicity in this. And we cannot have, you know, you take a break for two months while, as we said, every 10 minutes, a child is dying in Gaza. But that's a red line. And I know, I want to shame anyone on this council who hangs out with Mike Levin. He has been facilitating this genocide.
Oscar, Free Palestine, followed by Linda.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Real quick, we live between Peerview and the 800 block of Cleveland and Tremont. We're the only two streets that I'm aware of that we get street sweeping on the first and the third Monday, but it's both sides of the street. To our west, Pacific has staggered. One side of the streets, I believe, is like six to 10 and the other one is like 10 to 2. And then when you go east of Coast Highway, they're also staggered there as well. And before, we used to be able to kind of park our cars in the Harbor parking lot, but that was kind of taken away. And most recently, our fellow neighbors have started to park, blocking their garages. But they were cited for violations of blocking the alley potentially. So we really have no place to go and we're really the two isolated streets. I don't know why we still remain that way, but like I said, to the east and west, it's staggered. We're the only two streets.
Thank you. We have someone in the, Rob, could you speak to him? Thank you very much. We have our Assistant City Manager in the back? He's going to speak to you. Okay, that was Oscar. Linda? Linda?
Hi, my name's Dan Burke. I'm-
Oh, Dan.
Yeah. I'm, good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Councilmembers. My name is Dan Burke and I'm here to speak on the same topic that Oscar just raised. I would just echo the points that he made. Cleveland and Tremont Street, north of Peerview, the parking prohibition on each side of the street is at the same time. And with the congestion that's going to come from the Neptune Project, which I fully support, is just going to make the situation worse. Right now, everyone on those streets is scrambling on Sunday night to find a place to park. They're going across Coast Highway, jaywalking, it's a dangerous condition. They're also finding parking on vacant lots and trespassing, driving over curbs. They're parking in the alley against their garages, they're starting to enforce ticketing there. We have nothing, there's nothing we can do. And it's that way on Cleveland and Tremont, but nowhere else that I could find, at least like north of Missouri Street. Everywhere else, it's prohibition. On one side of the street is different than the other. And I was just asked that we have the same thing on Tremont and Cleveland.
Thank you. If you want to go up there and speak with, with the Assistant City Manager. Thank you. Linda?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Linda Delgado. I live on the 800 block of Tremont. I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration for staggered street sweeping times on Tremont and Cleveland. Thank you.
Did you want to join the group over there? Thank you so much, appreciate that. Kathy, followed by Dave.
Kathy?
Is there a Kathy? No? Okay, Dave? Is there a Dave?
Dave?
No? How about?
Free Palestine?
Mr. Free. Anybody? No? Chris, Chris G, I think?
Chris G or Christine G?
Chris G? No? How about Chris, well, Chris and Christine. How about Dora? Is there a Dora?
Are you Christine G or Dora?
No, I'm Dora.
She's Dora.
Dora, okay.
Dear City Council, thank you for all the hard work you have been doing for our city and its residents. My name is Dora, which means freedom in Hebrew. I am named after my grandmother, who was not free as she was murdered during the Holocaust because she was Jewish. Now, I am a grandmother and I am worried about the future of my Jewish children and grandchildren. I want to ask you not to believe the misinformation that supports, that the supporters of Hamas keep ringing up in every meeting here. They are spreading lies about Israel. Israel didn't start this war. Hamas did on October 7, 2023. Every day now, Israel must worry about invasion, terrorism and missiles.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
It has to defend itself for its existence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cease, anyone sign up under ceasefire now? Did anyone sign up under?
Lauren?
Lauren?
Is there a Lauren? How about Hosai?
Oh wait, there's Lauren. We got a Lauren.
Oh, there you go. Hi, Lauren.
And then Hosai will be next.
I just want to thank the council for all the hard work and all the abuse you take. It's not easy, but this is democracy. I want to really quickly say that my nephew, who lives in Monrovia, an honors student, 16 years old, had swastikas drawn all over his posters that were on the wall, then they were stuffed into a toilet. He was running for student president. Also, it's happened- Excuse me, could you stop? Please, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Give her an extra 10 seconds. Thank you.
Driven in part by a massive spike in antisemitic incidents after the October 7 massacre in Israel and the ongoing war in Gaza, the Jewish Committee in San Diego and the United States experienced an unprecedented increase in antisemitic incidents. ADL released the 2023 audit of antisemitic incidents today and the data is staggering. ADL San Diego recorded 108 incidents of antisemitic assault, vandalism and harassment, soaring to 200% above the previous records of 36 set the prior year. Students do not feel safe. I don't feel safe. This is my town. I walk the streets, I feed homeless, I stood with the LBGQ society, I'm a progressive. I'm ashamed now to be a progressive.
Stop talking while somebody else is talking.
My time is almost up.
All right, thank you very much. Lauren?
Thank you very much. Please-
Hosai?
Protect us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Respected Mayor and there's council members, I'm here-
Speak into the mic, please.
Hosai, yeah, thank you.
I'm here to pose a question. If I tell you right now that there is a group of active shooters here in Oceanside, are you guys going to mobilize an army, a massive army, give them weapons of mass destruction and give them the high-end surveillance tools to go and target every residential area, every hospital, every educational center, every medical center, every, I mean, facility in the city and bomb them and target every child, woman, man, doctor, journalist, aid workers, and then call them terrorists? And whoever did not survive this and starve them to death or take them to prison and then torture them for the rest of their lives? No, most likely no. I'm asking in the name of humanity that you guys have, in the name of justice that you guys have, to call for ceasefire and to divest anything that is going towards the genocide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Taz, Ms. On.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say that when you call for a ceasefire, you are not just making a political statement, you are not making an anti-Jewish statement, you are not making an anti-religious statement. What you are doing is showing the world that you, the fine people that elected you, are restoring their belief that you are the right people to govern the city of Oceanside. You are standing for humanity when you make that statement. You are showing your courage and standing for the almost 40,000 people that were killed in Gaza. You are standing for the people that are starving in Palestine. You are standing for the medical crisis that Palestine is facing. Your courage, your statement makes a courageous statement that you are the people that will stand for the people of Oceanside when it comes time, because today you are standing for the people of Gaza. And I just want to repeat one more thing that we were mentioning earlier. ADL was just declared an unreliable source of antisemitic definitions, so we can't take that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you've got Brandon. I'm sorry, I was not able to talk to you a few minutes ago, but you can speak here now. You've got one minute. Okay, you, you wanted to speak on the Marlato.
Yes, I want to speak on item number 34.
Well-
I was waiting for the city to get back to me on this matter for our 30-minute discussion on Monday, never happened. So at any rate, I'll take three minutes, won't break the bank, not going to hurt anybody's feelings, I hope.
You'll take one minute, sir.
And so here I go. In 1998, developer Watt Homes, environmental consultant advised in no uncertain terms against establishing an HOA for this or any similar development, i.e. single-family homes. The city ignored the admonition, formed the Marlato HOA and by extension LMAD, placing the cost burden on maintaining the adjoining open space onto a single development, 130 homes, opting out all adjacent developments, several hundred homes. Where most LMADs, monthly fees are a few dollars a month, 17, 45, homeowners in our community were-
Brandon, you need to stop.
Saddled with not only HOA fees, but $60, $60 a month.
Brandon. Brandon, there is a, there is someone that will speak to you right now. There is someone that will speak to you right now, okay? Rob, raise your hand. Okay, he's going to go talk, go talk to him. The city, Assistant City Manager. Assistant City, you are on the record. You are on the record. You're out of time. I had, I have to treat everybody the same. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Sir? Sir? Sir! Your time is up. There is a staff member back there that will be more than happy to talk to you. Your time is up. We must have decorum in this chamber, sir.
Okay. Rob, Mr. O'Brien. I spoke to you a couple of times.
Sir, we must have decorum.
Rob, can you please go outside, take him outside, please?
Our next speaker is Arlene Hammerschmidt. Arlene, are the following people here. Barry Blumenthal, Danita Kilibrue.
Okay.
Robert Espinoza.
Okay, listen, so you have four, three other people, is that correct?
There are four altogether.
Four altogether. I will give you four minutes, one per each person, because I cut off the time for everyone else as well. Are the other three people here, raise your hand. One, two, three, okay. You've got four minutes.
Mayor, Council, Public and Media, Arlene Hammerschmidt, Ruralish Spire Mountain. So the city paid a former colleague of the deputy city manager nearly $25,000 to consult and investigate a complaint. He doesn't investigate the complaint item about discrimination, failed to interview all of the specific Parks and Rec staff that had knowledge of or were intimately involved in the wrongful classification of Coastal Academy, not even by phone, because there wasn't enough time. But he spends contracted time figuring out if the city lost any money, which is not in the complaint, is that fraud? When you file an official complaint with the city, you trust it will be fully investigated. Mine of December 10, 2022 was not. I filed because our low-income, at-risk, mostly people of color community who cherish the positive change sport has had on themselves, their grandparents and their parents and their kids, who see that availability slipping away, given to more privileged, feared retaliation by Parks and Rec staff if they filed. Item number 10 was about discrimination, was not investigated. Item number one about a charter school getting the same priority as OUSDJUA schools was incomplete. Therefore, Consultant Lee's report is invalid until all complaint items are fully investigated by a fully genuine independent party. What trust the community had in the city is gone. The people of Oceanside deserve to know about conflict of interest, favoritism and discrimination by this city. It's time to find better ways to do business of the city to operate. Conflict of interest and maybe prejudice was involved when the city swept a perceived discrimination complaint item under the proverbial rug by excluding it from the investigating consultant's contract. Looks like either Deputy City Manager and Consultant Mr. Lee's worked together to ensure that complaint item point 10 about the marginalization and mistreatment of specific groups' perceived discrimination would not be investigated. Or Deputy City Manager failed to properly supervise Mr. Lee's in allowing him to ignore point 10 and cover that fact by stating his, this other part in his report. Plus, Mr. Lee's was allowed to partially investigate it, item number one, the wrongful classification of Coastal Academy. Was he told not to? Mr. Wayne Goddard and myself gave Mr. Lee's references in his, that he references in his report. We gave him names, he didn't follow those leads. So how can we trust? Mr. City Man, City, gosh. Mr. Clerk, the top one is for you, for the public record. These are documents verifying what I had in my 10 minutes. The rest is one for each one person sitting here.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you very much. All right. General Councilmember comments? I didn't think so. All right. We're going to, after this very stormy meeting here tonight, we're going to go ahead and adjourn, we're going to be off, the council's going to be off for a month, actually almost five weeks. So the next meeting is August 7th, Wednesday, August 7th, 3:30. Happy 4th of July and we'll see you, the parade is this Saturday, please come. It starts at 10 and it's an old-fashioned kind of parade that only Oceanside can do. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.